Board in this.
The budget.
I'll go ahead and open the workshop session. We have budget presentations all day. The prosecuting attorney is first up at nine o'clock. He is caught in traffic, I suspect. It is road construction. Some of us were smart enough to go the other way. Some of us missed it entirely this morning.
How do we, as a board, want to handle these budgets presented to us today? Do we want to just continue like we have last week? Or do we want to really get into the line items and ask questions of line items and remove fifty dollars here and five hundred there? How does this towards what she go?
Um, well, I would, I would suggest and support you ask any question you want to ask as far as on a, on any specific line item so that you understand it. As to specific cuts, I'm not gonna, I mean, you can, you can raise your position as far as that that's what you're suggesting. I'm, I'm not gonna agree until I've heard all of the presentations, give everybody a chance before we go to work. But I think you can raise them so that we just make a note of.
You're, you're, the way you're doing it, I, I think it'd be good if we all did the same way is if there's a line item that I question. And I've asked question, I should just circle that and we'll come back around later and discuss that.
Yes, that would be my suggestion.
The way I thought it was going.
That will be noticed that what we'll do is when the, when everybody's making a presentation, the, then the board will, will start its process.
Throw those numbers all together and we're gonna start.
What do you think about this? What do you think about that?
Fine, I just wanted another. Make sure I was on the right page. That's what I've been doing.
All right, catch your breath.
Oh, it's traffic.
Long there.
Your road dollars at work.
Our road dollars.
Well, I would have made a book for that. His budgets are later. You can come take.
Yeah.
Yeah, I am for agreeing to take all pets. I figured that out by the time I got to center mail.
Yeah.
I was gonna be kind of close and but for the construction, I think would have been, but. Any event up here.
Catch your, catch your breath. We, we got plenty of time.
So I want to talk about the hundred thousand dollars in additional expenditure.
So.
I don't.
Wow, wow. You're talking about not burying the lead. Let's begin. Go ahead. Let's talk about that.
Okay, so I do have the budgets memo. I'll be honest, I get, I didn't get a chance to refresh. Bring us home, please. But, uh, so as you know, the prosecuting attorney's office is a law firm for the county. We're the only actual full-service law firm in Quikwick County that we're tasked with the representation for the county on all civil matters as well as advice. To the county commissioners and upon the discretion of the prosecutor and to other officers of the county, the other elected officials and department. We're also tasked with prosecuting all felonies that we believe there's sufficient evidence of a con, a conviction that occurs in the. Quikwick County as well as misdemeanors occurring outside the boundaries of the three municipalities of Quikwick County, Way Salmon, Vincent and Goldendale. Those three municipalities have their own municipal prosecutors that are tasked with that utilizing through contracts our district courts to serve as their municipal courts. So we, I think really the only agency in the county that pretty much interacts with every other agency in the county hopefully providing the best service. That we can, we strive for professionalism and everything, everything we do is reflective of the status of, as a. So the request from the county commissioners this year. Contrary to previous years, which were status quo requests, was a request for three percent of reduction in actuals. So which posed great difficulties for my office because our actuals last year were significantly below the budget amount because of some lengthy gaps in the utilization.
Oh, I thought you said you only have the memo.
Oh, no, I have. I just think you have to look at it again this morning. So.
He hasn't memorized.
So the, there was significant staff openings that led to about a couple hundred thousand dollars in savings on that. I've always utilized a philosophy controversial in some circles, but slow to hire, quick to fire that where we do not fill positions just to have it filled. We try to find the best fit possible. And if the, we don't have a candidate that we believe is a good fit, their position remains open. That does create burdens on the other staff members, especially the administrative staff that the office administrator picks up quite a bit of weight there. And then through the attorney son splitting the case loads. So the only way I could substantially meet on the requirement was a proposal of, I think, one of the rare people coming for you was a. A proposal in good faith to review staff time. And that proposal was communicated to the staff member who immediately. Wish to transfer to a full-time position to maintain his hours and you guys hired him. So kind of took care of that situation. It's a, a little frustrating because that is a service that we'd like to have at some point available to us is our investigator that has proved. No, like individual issues, extremely high character, high worth individual that was a joy to work with and was a good influence, especially on the young, younger attorneys. And I think it was really eye-opening experience for him, having been in law enforcement for several years, being in a prosecutor's office and realizing how different the approach is. To analyzing a case and handling a case often between the prosecutors and law enforcement. So. The, the, the proposed numbers, I believe, had a few reduction down to about eight hours a week. We're hoping to, I don't, I can't imagine actually being able to fill that position with someone willing to work one day a week. But those numbers are consistent with the allocation for you. So if we can go through line by line if you like. So we do have kind of two different funds. We have the, the main prosecutor's office, which handles the aspects of the law firm as well as a division for the child support enforcement. Which is usually reversed through grants through the state, almost all the child support work, the reverse through the state through the grants. We also handle the coroner's function. I am also the executive official coroner for Quikwick County, which the board or budget implications should be aware of. Will not be the case commencing in two thousand twenty-four. So the board will need, and then next year or two, to be thinking about the budget implications, making a decision on whether the coroner should be appointed or elected. At that, the process of going through that, but it is no longer going to be through the prosecutor's office by change of statute by the legislature.
Twenty twenty four?
I believe it's two, two thousand twenty-four. I can do a fuller presentation. It wasn't affecting this year's budget. So. But I, I, and I thought maybe WAC had kind of communicated that and it sounds like maybe not as effective as I hope. So I'll pop it together or something on that. And then also the victim witness fund. So I think I pointed out, and in addition to the difficulty of, of the three percent in actuals because of. The substantial reduction in expenditures last year because of staffing openings. I just wanted to make sure to point out that, you know, deliberately made the choice over the last four or five years consolidation of positions to maximize the economic efficiency of the office. So we, we really take it as an effort that we want people too busy. We don't want people in my office looking for things to do or having time to, you know, surf Facebook or text with each other. They're there to work on behalf of the taxpayers. So our organizational chart actually has several boxes that are, are, have not been filled for years in the attempt to achieve substantial savings to the taxpayers. We, for a few years now, have had two people doing four positions that for decades have been filled as individual. For example, for decades, there had been, I believe approximately two decades, there had been a full-time child support enforcement officer. We just didn't believe, based on the experience that we were having, that that should be a full-time job even. So we, we did reduce that. We consolidated that into one of the legal admin assistant positions that handles the felony caseloads. Basically, they're doing administrative support for superior court. That did mean a reduction in revenues because that we would not. Get that revenue stream to reimburse by that time based on the grant capital formula as from, from the state. But I, I take kind of a broader view. Tax dollars and tax dollars, all taxes that my goal is to minimize that. And so I, it doesn't matter if it's county general or state reimbursement. I just try to minimize the cost to achieve as long as we're able to. Perform our functions and duties in a professional and more, hopefully more than adequate manner. So some of the staffing does reflect that. I, I don't know. It would be a lot easier to be here as well. Heck, I'd get a lot of savings. Just whack a, a position that we didn't need, but I've already done that. So I just wanted to stress that. The vehicle, we're putting very little expenditures into the vehicle that is a rig dedicated to the corner services. I, I know there's been some discussion of going to a pool style. I, I'm not sure how many other departments would be willing to utilize that rig. It has been used to transport remains. And so that tends to affect. Not, not often, but we've moved a few body parts in there. And so.
Just for clarification, my whole thinking on pool was not every county vehicle. And when we do discuss a pool, everybody will get to give us information like that to me to have a decision.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I think you folks know I'm pretty flexible and trying to work with different needs of the different departments and elect this. So we turned over our conference room multiple times through the years for utilization by different departments when public works, even when other departments have refused, which always kind of misapplies me. But so we do our best to try to accommodate work with the needs of the county and other departments. So the revenue, the substantial portion of the revenue that goes on the prosecutor's fund is the reimbursement, of course, of the about two-thirds of my salary. The state legislature about five years ago recapitulated formula for the compensation of each county prosecutor. We do act on as an agent of the state in the prosecution of all felony cases. We are state actors. We don't bring actions on behalf of Quikwick County, but all our felonies are captured on behalf of the people of the state of Washington. So they set a formula that half the salary of a spirit court judge is provided by the state. At this point, spirit court judge salary is approximately two hundred thousand. So the state gives us nearly one hundred thousand dollars to go towards my salary. And then the remaining is made up, the remaining of the salaries paid by the county. The only caveat is that that county portion cannot be reduced from the date that the state enacted the, 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 the different formula and the allocation through the state. Actually, going back, I think that was been a while up to those days or so forth. So that's a substantial portion of the revenue stream. That is nothing that we can have any control over. But in effect, it means the counting portion towards my salary is actually the lowest contribution of the, of the electeds in the county. So office of child support, there is further reduction proposed that reflects what we, what we anticipate will be the actual numbers. Again, this is reflecting the, the work that's done. There was less work done last year as well. That's going to be an issue again and again. About the revenues and expenditures, because for the majority of the year here last year, the, the courts were closed. That is hard to litigate and to get reimbursement for time spent on litigation when there is no court availability. So that's why, you know, two thousand twenty is, is a hard number for, and I imagine you're gonna hear this in different variations from other folks for utilization of the actuals. It's kind of unfortunate that we don't have like a five or ten-year timeframe on that. But. So that's the child support, those numbers for the reimbursement. The corner revenue stream is from, we get a percentage, if I recall correctly, about forty percent of the cost of an autopsy is reimbursed through the state. So that's what that revenue stream reflects. The private donation is the reimbursement from the prosecutor's association. They offered per year for attending training. So I believe it's. Recall quickly about a hundred dollars a day. At last year, there were no in-person training. So there were no reimbursement of expenditures that were a, a part of that. So part of the, the attorneys, like any skilled professions, requires the continuing, set of continuing legal education requirements. And the prosecutor's association is one of the, the main benefits of the state organizations. They provide at lower no cost substantial trainees that can meet the requirements of the attorneys. It's roughly fifteen hours a year that is required. As with any skilled profession, the goal shouldn't be the minimum continuing legal education, but to keep your skills and education up to date as possible. So going to the prosecutor's fund expenditures, I think they largely speak for themselves. The salaries with the reduction staff time was a, the proposed reduction is six point six percent. The benefits, I, 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 the, the formula is that have been, been used in the past and been insufficient to cover the cost of the benefits. So I increased those to what I believe is will call cover the actual cost. And again, that's largely out of my control. You cannot make higher decisions based on, you're gonna put your family in insurance or not. Those, those are not considerations that we've made. So there's little control that can be made about that. The supplies generally, there are some reductions proposed. We substantial reduction that probably notices in office. Is the office of, as to legal publications, we had previously had both online access and physical books that we maintained in updated library. We terminated that contract last year so that reflects that savings about eight, eight thousand dollars a year. We now utilize the online access that we have through Westlaw that, especially with. The increased flexibility for remote, remote working has been a real benefit. But I think I'm at the tail end of the generation that use mostly books, either legal education and the beginning of their practice. I think everyone younger than me has really been exclusively online legal research for, for quite some time. Of course, I was on the tail end when you could smoke in your office, drink at lunch. So those, those are over. So.
You're scaring me. I got my.
Were, were, that was past tense.
Right. So. The travel training is.
I guess yesterday was past tense.
I'm not sure where to make of that. So the travel and training, slight reduction, try to take advantage of some of that. The travel, the training budget is higher than what you probably see in some departments. But again, it reflects the height, you know, the, the, the credentialed nature of the majority of the. Office as well as the need for ongoing training requirements for administrative staff. They have one to two trainees a year or different aspects on, on that. We're currently on training like that. So being a lawyer is not cheap. Using a lawyer is not cheap. Around lawyers cannot be cheap. Oh, and that's, we do our best. And I appreciate the graciousness of the board in the past and the recognition of the importance of adequate training and not just meeting a minimum, but trying to. The, you know, not unreasonably, of course. I don't want people spending all their time doing training. That's nonsense. But the, the, doing the best to reflect. Up to date on knowledge and skills. And then the transfers, the car. So when you, yeah, go ahead.
Question on insurance. You dropped insurance from point five thousand down to twenty and everybody else's insurance is going up.
I was just based on the actuals that I saw that, that were provided to me. That it seems that we, I had budgeted more than what was allocated. So just trying to account for that as, you know, that is interesting topic because that really is a line item that is outside of our control.
I just wanted, right. You wanted to make sure you were aware that everybody's insurance was going up thirteen percent. And that's, you think that's still a correct?
Well, that could be a mistake. And so if, if the board believes that is an issue, I would ask that to be considered in, in the formulation, formulation, formulation of the final budget. I think you gentlemen, through your, to quote your board, would have greater information on, on whether this is an accurate number. I, I believe it is based on the past actuals, but I'm not privy of any proposals.
Did you take the past actuals and add seventeen percent to those, up to that number?
No, because then I would be a higher number. Oh, no, 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 the, on the actuals. It was a slight increase. I, I, I don't believe I used seventeen percent. So.
Are you guys talking about the same insurance, insurance and we're not medical versus?
No, not benefits. I believe, yeah. This is the portion attributed to the office for, for risk or whatever it's called.
Just a little clarification. The seventeen percent was for this year, not next year. We don't know what next year would be. I would definitely, I know I did mine high just because it's been going up and up. And with all the disasters and all, I just, I think it would be high next year as well.
So I, I, I take that, 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 that last year's actual was seventeen thousand ninety-nine. I proposed twenty thousand. That would be a roughly sixteen and a half percent increase. So I think if those numbers are in line, that, that would account for that. So maybe I did.
I think that's one of the things that we will, across the whole budget, we're gonna really check on those to be sure, just because that, as you said, that's something that's really not in your control. In a sense, it's not in our control.
Yeah.
We just want to make sure that the numbers are accurate.
I've always found a little law that that is divided by department, not just paid alongside attributed to the county, but any of that. That's within you guys' decision-making ability. So any other questions on that portion? Okay. The office of support enforcement, again, there are proposals for lower numbers because there's less time. I think the budgeted and the actuals have not aligned for two or three years now. So this budget brings that back into, I think, a closer percentage of what the actual expenditures will be to re, hopefully will be. We have picked up quite a bit of activity in the child support realm in the last few months. We anticipate hopefully that continuing went to next year of the utilization. Going, reutilizing some contempt procedures that were suspended for much longer than we anticipated. So that, that's picking back up. And then the benefits, we try to allocate frankly for grant purposes, the benefits for the FTE, the half, the FTE that's dedicated to child support enforcement on work through seek the reimbursement through that. The corner, there is a, I believe, I remember quickly a slate. Any other questions on the child support aspect? Okay. And then the corner, we began about four or five years ago as contracting with the local funeral home to provide direct services. On top of that, there's been some, I think quasi-volunteer retired law enforcement there do receive some compensation, but not nearly as much as what you would think. But to provide some on-call on that, part of that was to increase the response time and frankly, some of the professionalism of the, the response on the corner calls for years and years. That duty had been split between the attorneys who were on one-week rotations on call. Nobody went to law school to pick up pieces of bread. And so it was an issue for recruiting, retention and different things. And at that time, we had looked at how much we were budgeting and expenditures on transportation costs. I approached the funeral home. He had actually approached, approached to my predecessors with inquiring on willingness to enter into some sort of relationship. Because they, they have to respond to these because they do the actual transport to the medical examiner's office and so forth. So we, I did structure a contract that was about three thousand dollars more than what they had been receiving for transportation costs. This has been an incredible boon, I think, for the county, for the community, where especially on the west end, we're getting corporate response times. It was extremely unusual to have deputies that could afford to live on the west end, especially nowadays. So it was not uncommon for family members to have to wait one, two, sometimes given the weather, things like that, two plus hours for a response from the corner. The body cannot be moved until the corner responds. So that can lead to some, sometimes unfortunate circumstances where family members, you know, laying in a driveway. It was really that particular fact, that pattern that led to really looking into alternatives when an individual was on a driveway, white salmon for a couple hours with kids going by. And, you know, it was a nice summer day and, you know, this is not okay. So I, I.
Actually gonna stop you in, in view of time. I want to make sure that there's an opportunity of people have questions.
Oh, I've been trying to stop you. I apologize. Just let me know if there's any questions.
The feeling you got a half an hour. He does, I believe. East District Court is at nine thirty. So I'm trying to keep us on.
So for the corner though, the, the, the contract amount has not changed since the commencement of the arrangement. At this point, I, I don't think there's a large increase. But I, I, my position is I, I think at this point, another thousand, I would propose or two thousand in addition to the contract. To about twelve thousand. That was some of the professional service is that that would come out the professional services aspect on that. So that was reflecting the, the approximately seventeen hundred dollar increase on that. Okay. So any other questions on that prosecutor? Go ahead. Sorry.
I did back to, so just if you can, professional services, not the corner professional services, but the forty one hundred.
You know, thank you. I wanted to bring up a point on that, but go ahead.
Yeah, good. No, no, go ahead. Can you explain that just because the, what is covered under the professional services? And then your previous prior year actual was twenty-nine, so just about thirty thousand dollars. Oh, so it's on our page thirty-seven right, right here.
What do you think bars number?
Forty one hundred.
Oh, four, one hundred.
Yeah. And the amended con, or for this year was forty thousand. You're proposing thirty-five, so a reduction from this year's. But what's covered under that in the thirty-five thousand when last year was basically thirty thousand? So what's, what's in that line item or?
One of the principal items in that, there's several things that cover the professional services. One of the larger ticket items in the last few years has been the contract the county has with the Safe Space, the Children's Advocacy Center. There was, the, the previous year, the full allotment had not been utilized. So the arrangement was put over for another year, kind of carried over. So that was about twelve thousand dollars that were not expended. That's certainly not the case going into next year. And in fact, I think I hinted at this on Tuesday. There's been an immense amount of work and effort. And we, we've never had a functioning multidisciplinary team regarding child abuse and neglect, the child abuse and neglect investigations with that county. This is really something I think is important for identifying gaps in services and needs for traumatized children and their families in the community at large. And utilization through the Children's Advocacy Center now called Safe Space and Hood River is essential for that. We just simply don't have the numbers and resources to have our own Children's Advocacy Center. That would be hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. So the state had last year approached myself, programs for peaceful living, other things with the idea of trying to fund the formation of a CAC. It's just that from my perspective, as a taxman constituent, it, it simply didn't make sense. We should try to increase utilization. The state has come in to kick some money towards that. I, to get full services and to bring CPS fully involved into the MDT. We do need to find some way to, to, to increase services additionally. It's about two thousand dollars a child, which covers the, the full panoply of the forensic interviewing, medical examination and so forth. So that is something, and I'm glad you brought my attention to that. Although you probably don't like the reason, but I would find a way to increase that. The other professional services and why the actuals were down last year is that is the line item we use for retention of experts in litigation. So that's why typically that number, the budget that I inherited in my predecessor and I believe her predecessor, that number was routinely in the six figures. To be prepared, one hotly contested murder case could eat up a hundred thousand dollars in expert's fees. So it was to maintain some flexibility there. So there wasn't need to worry about supplementals in order to move forward with a complicated rape case or murder case that generally has. If it's hotly contested, we'll have a lot of medical advice and retention for experts, some of the domestic violence. Yes.
And I'm sure you're aware that I'm a big supporter, say, of. And you thinking that, that amount could go up, could, would benefit that group.
Oh, absolutely. Right now.
The question with a limited budget is it's not that we have more money to give. We have to pick and choose our battles and where to get it. So giving our dollars to that group to help those children, I know, I make a difference. As opposed to the youth center and exam. So for future consideration. I might bring up in the future diverting those dollars to this group that, that really.
Perhaps maybe if we could schedule a further conversation, like we could involve some other stakeholders and get the, the full information before a decision.
I was just wanting to get out for future.
So the victim witness. Uh, so the victim witness.
Okay, well, you have.
Any questions on that? Uh.
The only, the only question I add back to the Safe Space and the professional services. The budget you proposed, the thirty-five thousand, does not include any increase.
No, it does not.
That, I just wanna be clear about that.
No, but I, I, I don't believe, uh, the request or that went out was to find more ways to spend money.
No, well, I, I know, although I will say there are other departments that did, that did in fact.
Well, I figured I'd try to put it in there. Uh, but, uh, so which.
Okay, I think, I think if there's nothing else, we can schedule.
Victim witness, anything, any questions on, on that?
I had no yellow marks on that.
Okay. All right. Any other questions in, in general, it's the budget? Okay, sorry. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Sorry for being too late.
Uh, next up is East District Court. Good morning.
Cause it's under my finger.
It's always hard to see when it's right for me.
I know it is. Okay. You, you may, this is, this is your time. Uh, if you wanna go through, if you wanna highlight, raise, raise awareness on, and then we'll, we can either ask questions as we go or we can hold those to the end, just whenever you're most comfortable.
I wasn't really sure how to prepare, so.
No, that's good. Neither were we, so.
Um, I went through our expenditures and I tried to reduce everything as much as I could. I know I didn't quite meet your three percent, but I came, reduced several things. And I didn't wanna touch the salaries or anything like that. The only thing on expenditures that did increase is the, um, insurance, and we don't have a lot of control over that. I did go through and update some of the revenues to show some increases and things. There was a couple of, um, state changes that caused some increases in our revenues or that we expect to be some increases. The only real concern or category that we've had any struggles with is the professional services with interpreter costs. Was seeming to be going up. The number of cases that require interpreters. The attorney's fees. Have been going up somewhat, but that, that's not on our budget here, but that has been a concern. I think that kind of highlights.
What is the miscellaneous, the forty-nine oh one? The last year was thirty-two hundred. This year's current actual is forty-five and you have it at nineteen-five, going down to fifteen thousand.
The biggest part of that company is the, uh, jury trial expenses, paying for jurors and the cost of the jury trials.
So for last year, you didn't have any. I'm sure you haven't had money, but that doesn't mean next year you're not gonna have any wealth. You're planning for that.
Right. And we're starting to catch up almost now. Um, we do have three scheduled for next week in October. At this point, we've got about twelve scheduled. A lot of those could settle, but we do have them. We're working on those.
Just clarification that fifteen nineteen thousand is around what you would spend on COVID years.
Right.
Okay, um, my question, I'm going over your revenue side, uh, and most everything, um, I've seen seems pretty high compared to, uh, the prior year. Um, and I understand the prior year was a slow year. Um, so where did you get those numbers? Did you take those from twenty nineteen?
Yes, I compared, um, the last couple of years. To come up with those, as you said, last year was an odd year. The collection agencies weren't able to do a lot of collecting. People weren't paying very well, and that has picked up. And they also didn't write a lot of citations last year. So we didn't have a lot of those to collect on, but that has picked up quite a bit.
So, uh, the shared cost for Goldendale for the prior year was twenty-one thousand, eighteen thousand for the current year. And then your budgeted for next year is, uh, twelve thousand. Uh, why, why is that so much lower than where we're currently at?
It's a contracted amount.
Okay.
Calculated based on citations from the previous years. So it's not something that we have any control over.
Right, but you, you actually expect that it's gonna go down now.
Some of the numbers from last year.
Okay.
That's what it's based on.
Alright, thank you.
Other questions? Is it contracted amount set with the cities? Is that set by statute? Do you know? Or is that set by just negotiation with the board of the city?
I believe it's based on filings and percentages that come up. Um, that's not a. The court isn't involved in how that's all done. I'm just given a letter that says how much.
Right, right, right. I'm just trying to figure out whether, I mean, you might know, does that, does that fee that we charge the cities for dealing with their stuff, is that set by statute or is that set by negotiation with us that might be subsidized by the county?
Yeah, I, I will look at the court case.
That, uh, billing comes from the boards of, of your office. And I'd have to go double check to see whether it was set by statute or not. I know the procedure that I was taught to use, that we do use, as Jane said, it's based on filings. It's a three-year average. And there's a percentages, it's a, it's all formalized as far as what the judge's benefits are, their salaries, their longevity, all that plays into it. And then based on a three-year average, that's how you determine what Benjamin gets charged by salmon and Goldendale.
As their part of the county, and that percentage is the number that we've done the math on.
Right.
So this is the, so it's the county, the county pays all the bills. And so we pay a hundred percent and then we figure out based on the municipalities, what percentage that, right, that they use the court, then they pay. Like, they pay their proportionate share.
I guess my question is if there's twenty-three thousand people in the county and let's say half of those people reside at the cities, are those cities paying half of that expense?
Collectively, it would be only if they use the, if the, if the filings come through. We don't do, so if the filing is a city filing that is being done in the court, they would pay. If people, I mean, I guess it, it should work out roughly that way, uh, but I, I guess if folks living in the municipalities are more litigious than people in, they would pay a higher percentage, or maybe, maybe unincorporated folks have more stuff in court. I don't know. I think the baby, I, I, cause I had raised this issue before about fair, equitable, that the cities are paying their own way. It's not about, it's really not in your budget.
Yeah, it's not you.
It's not you. It's not in there. It's more, we have some other services that we're paying that are, um, and it's more in probation and where they're paying nothing.
Correct.
And we.
I was questioning, but it has nothing to do with your, your department. I was just trying to see, I guess, if you can raise your revenue.
Yeah, so. Everybody should pay their fair share. It sounds like the formula is they, everybody is, as far as for that component of how it is re- how it is relevant in your budget.
And we have been seeing the city filing more citations than normal this year too, so that could increase it in the future years.
In the future, well, they'll pay more. Okay. Other questions?
I have no.
Thing else? I don't want, well, wait, just checking, sure, let's see. Try to put a little, um, actually, it was the miscellaneous in, you already asked that question, so. No, I think I'm good. That was the only thing I had. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
A little, uh, break, although you could, maybe let the assessor know we're running ahead.
Oh, I like that.
Chance to welcome our esteemed colleagues in the room.
As you're in the auditor.
Thank you.
What a perfect time to bring up my sticky note, just because I brought it up in long. Don't throw breaks. Have we done anything about the candy?
I sent out an email asking.
Yes, you did. Yeah, it's this week.
Movement.
I haven't responded yet.
You gotta tell me there's movement and I'm happy.
Yeah, no, and I found some.
I just wanted to apologize for being late. I was tied up in court. I understand, like, he knows way more about this than I do anyway, so I'm sure you got the information, but sorry.
I do need a new Sharpie pen though, because I just used it all up on.
Well, there, we'll provide you with one.
I was saying, so, we're not, no, we haven't done yours. I was just joking.
Oh, I thought you did.
No, no, we did, we did.
I was trying to joke that I slashed it to death.
Oh, I just, well, I figured you were gonna do that.
No, 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 no.
But anyway, that's why I wasn't here. So thank you for worries. Listening to Mike Clark again, she's way more confident, seriously than I am.
No, she did a, she did an excellent job.
Thank you. Answered all the questions. Thank you, sir.
The assessor will be down in five minutes.
Okay.
Well, once we get a date, I will send those out, but I didn't wanna ship them out and not have a date.
Yeah, we did Gordy, Gordy said the eleventh. Is that what he is?
Fourteen. Yeah.
Generally, my schedule is always terrible, so it doesn't really matter. They're all equally bad. I just have to move stuff around.
Right. Yeah.
Well, honestly, those are the only two days available, so.
Oh, well, that makes it easy now.
Remind me again on Kowski, where if I was remembering right, you were like one point two or one point five million or guesstimating.
I had, oh, somebody else had said that. I'm, I'm not going out on that limb.
Let's say that's the only note.
I'm not going out on that limb. Somebody else made that guess.
You don't have a guesstimate?
I have one in my head, but I have nothing.
If I get enough guesstimates, I can at least.
I have nothing to base it on.
I have to judge the future based off guesstimations that I have no idea, so.
I haven't asked these people that have replaced their systems what they spent. And that's where I would come with my guesstimate. I would want more facts to make my guesstimate. And I barely have.
Spends the money. Hopefully before somebody else spends the money.
I would go with the estimate you have, because, you know.
Well, it's somewhere in the ballpark.
I really can't tell you.
Somewhere between ouch and yikes.
Well, I'm, I'm fine with going with a guesstimate of one point two or one point five, as long as it comes back to two point five. Then you go, whoops, didn't plan for that thing.
And that would make it DMV.
Yeah.
No reason. Oh, I gotta cost a hundred thousand. Twenty million, twenty million, right.
That's how many times you rebuild the website, right?
Then the lights are still on, and then it doesn't work.
And it doesn't work.
And then it doesn't work.
And then you shut it down and maybe don't go back after your money.
Right. It's hard to get money back from the team.
Yeah, that's right. So many people on for this important day.
Well, I guess we're just going down, not no, close to seventy. People just don't care about money as much as they care about the entertainment.
Graciously thing is people that complain about money, obviously, we aren't paying attention to this.
So I'm taking it or have a lot of people on them.
No, Dave McClure, Heather, um, KG, whoever KG is.
That might be a whole different, whole problem.
That's next week.
I would have welcomed up to that on Tuesday. Uh, we either laugh or cry.
I'm just wondering if the highway department on both sides of the river, oops, we're running out of, let's do all the.
Let's do everything simultaneously.
They closed the Dell Bridge on Friday, and that's when they closed the grade to do guardrail work, making, they didn't.
Yeah, they really planned it well.
They didn't know that.
Well, and then you've got the, the other, if you can find, go through every, you've got the, the construction of mile four sixty-eight, don't you?
Oh, right, they're rough, they're rough.
Yeah, so.
At least they have changed for whatever reason from the hard forty-five minute, like, all-stop, twenty-minute.
Oh, down there?
Yeah, they haven't actually, they only did that the first week. They haven't, but it's really, cause you don't know, they won't actually commit one way or the other until the, maybe the day before. So you have to check, cause that to go in the, it's like, the safest thing is just be through before seven and then it doesn't matter, cause you're like, I can handle a twenty-minute wait. I can't handle a forty-five minute wait. Otherwise, my students will be in my class before I am. Although half of them are stuck with you on the wrong side of the.
How long are they planning that?
It's only another week they're supposed to be done.
Really?
I, I didn't, I haven't noticed a lot of progress. Maybe it's one of those that they're, they're doing it all and then it's all just gonna appear, but I don't think so either. So I'm skeptical. They haven't been on their, the whole thing was supposed to be done before school started.
Right.
And so. Which I don't understand. They said they, they pushed it back because they didn't have the materials that they needed. I don't know what materials they needed for this killing work. I, I don't either, but that's a ready, I mean, that's a good. Credible, uh, excuse for any construction project. I don't know how.
What are they doing in that section?
What, they're scaling and they're gonna put the wire, I guess, the mesh on there to keep the rocks from rolling down. They dug, like a wirepan. Like a wirepan. They dug, they eliminated, which that even by itself will make a huge difference, cause they.
Oh, yeah.
Although all the stuff, they actually had kind of placed a lot of it there. That was a different project. And then they took it back. I mean, that was like twenty years ago, I think, the last time.
Like on eighty-four, they mark where the puddles are, and then they go and, uh, put a drain in, and then the first rain, they're standing up there, there's puddles over there and the drain.
The drain is here.
Yeah, sure, this is where the puddle was.
Yeah, that was last time. So, although I do remember, I mean, that, I mean, it has gotten a lot better, that stretch of the road. I mean, we all remember, some of us even remember when the tunnel was there.
That was pre-me.
That was pre, you were driving back. You were alive. You just weren't driving.
Well.
Yeah. That was a, you know.
Doing the scaling on the first rail.
Yeah, yeah, it was. No, it was the wrecked log trucks in the tunnel.
I remember, I didn't live on the side of the river, but they were constantly on the news, head-on collisions.
In the tunnel, that tunnel. So then they, they blasted, which I think the road was closed for two months straight or something, cause they just.
Where'd they send all their rock there?
Some of it is still there. It's, you know, the, you know, that was in the good old days when the, you push the mountain into the river.
Right.
Across, over the. Yeah, over the railroad tracks and you just.
The worst construction we ever had was when I was down in Fairview, in our way out of our neighborhood, they were fixing a train bridge and they had the railroads for two years.
Oh, my goodness.
You had to go the long way around for two years, and they were hardly ever working on it, and there was like two guys at one shovel. It was just two years. Oh, my God.
Make work pay.
No, my worst was the ninety-six flood where the road was.
Yeah, yeah, but there's a reason there, you know.
Even that, the county had it back. It was about six months before it was totally.
Thank you for that. Yeah, sorry.
So.
Catch your breath, catch your thoughts.
Better backup.
That's my muscle.
Yeah.
So, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Uh, with me today is my chief appraiser, my chief deputy. They're learning about the budget process and, uh, presenting before the board. So they'll be here, um, listening. Um, so each year, usually throughout the whole year, we're always considering, you know, what does our budget look like?
What is it? What are we going to need for the, the next year, the next few years and things like that? And so, um, taking that into consideration. We have actually. Reduced items and monies from our budget in the past few years. And some of that has been by our choice. Some of it has been at the request of the board. Some of it was just done. And. So I just kind of wanted to start with that to let you all know that historically, we have already reduced items and monies out of our budget. And. Our, as I understood our instructions, it was to reduce our budget 3% over 2020 actuals. Well, 2020 was not an actual year, so. We did look at that. And. What I'm going to present to you today is a realistic budget for our office. So over the last couple of years, we have reduced vehicles, thus vehicle rental weights, FTEs, repairs and maintenance, and travel. To both be fiscally responsible and as requested by the board. For the board's request, we have held the overall budget status quo in the past as well. Other than wages, benefits and insurance, which we don't, none of us really have a lot of control over. As far as the insurance. So. Last year was an especially difficult year. Staffing wise, typically we had nine employees in the assessor's office. Last year, we had an interval where we only had seven on staff. And in a normal year, that would not have been possible at all. With the scheduled retirement of my chief appraiser, we had already decided to attempt to cut one position. So to have the assessor's office to go from nine to eight. We had discussed that during the budget process last year. And. Late in the year, we did go through all of the hoops to hire an employee. And. So we were back up to eight again, and we thought that would be workable, but. We're in the middle of a discussion right now on that, so. When we went from nine to eight, we split duties between the administrative side and the appraisal side. And what, because we knew we didn't need four people on the administrative side full time. But by doing that, we also cut into the appraisal duties. And we're finding it difficult to get everything done on the appraisal side with having that reduction in there. So at a later time, I'll have to come before you for that discussion. In 2021, we had budgeted for nine employees, even though we knew we were going down to eight. And we still have that position in our organizational chart. I'm not proposing to fund it right now, since the ninth person.
Remind me, is the ninth person still on the org chart?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought that was.
And it was, and it was budgeted for 2021, yes.
That we would leave the, leave the box.
Yes, yeah.
Just with no funds.
With, well.
There was funds.
When there was funds in 2021, because we did, we absolutely did not know if we would be able to function with eight. Now we just need to figure out how to function with eight and get all of the duties done, and we haven't quite. Have that, have that yet. But the proposed budget here is for eight employees, which includes myself, so. I've never had a three and a quarter page budget before, so bear, bear with me, budget memo anyway. And so. Do you want me to kind of go through the line items by bars that I. Can either reduce or do not feel that I can produce?
How would you? This is, this is your time to make your cake, and then we'll just have time to, and we can take questions if you're comfortable as we go when you're discussing those line items, or we can hold them to the end.
Okay. So we were already kind of discussing wages. And our 2021 budget for wages was quarter of $57,326 as we budgeted for nine employees. Our 22, our 2022 wages are calculated at only eight employees. This is an estimated reduction of $19,050. I already discussed all of. That. Any quite, any other questions about that part? Yeah, okay, so the next. Portion is benefits, and, you know, due to reducing an employee, it also reduces benefits by an estimated $16,000 quarter, $19. And this is from the 2021 proposed. So my next item are supplies, fuels, tools and equipment. And one of the things that I did is I prepared a spreadsheet and I put in all of our actuals for the past seven years. And based on review of that past seven years, we can reduce these, this is its, its three, three bars codes, but the B3 categories by a little bit over 3%. So we can go from a $7,000 budget to a $5,400 budget. Professional services was a complicated line item. We had had two contractors that we need. We had had in the budget enough money to pay them their full contract amount if we ended up using them for that. That had been removed from our budget. And I had continued with that, like $10,000 not within that budget. However. That left us going over budget in that category last year. Our software vendors have been increasing every year since forever. But definitely within the last seven years. So. Last year, that went over budget by $1,744.93, and I'm talking 2020. And. With the typical vendor increase over the last seven years of approximately 5%. And the increase in services for revaluation notices. It's not likely that I'm going to be able to reduce that by nine of it all. So. And in fact, I'll probably have to ask for a supplemental this fall to cover that if we don't have another area. That we can move money from, and typically we're, we're discouraged. From moving anything from wages and benefits into one of our other categories, so if I'm not allowed to do that, we might have to. Alter that a little bit, but, you know, we did try. To do that, keep that reduction in there. And the next one is communications. Communications consists of our landlines, our cell phones, our postage, our copier, et cetera. We reduced that category by $4,000 in 2021. A 3% reduction from last year would leave it at $13,885 with the increase we already know about for this year. I don't feel that we can cover the expenses with a 3% reduction. And so. I believe I left that. At the same.
So you're saying the, the proposed for next year, 13, 885, you don't think that's an accurate number?
I, I think it's gonna leave us short.
What's that accurate number?
Well, some of those are out of our hands, so with your copier fees, it's like how much mailing you send out, how many copies that you make, those kinds of things.
The prior year actuals, 14,300.
Yeah, and so the difference between last year and this year is, so last year. We started our normal audit processes. For both the programs and seniors, and then because, you know, we were, the courthouse was totally shut down and everything was like it was, and you didn't want people going out. We definitely didn't want the elderly out traversing around and exposing themselves. We extended their application time still with what was allowed underneath the law, and so we didn't send out a lot of that stuff, so I would expect. I, I, I think if we leave it at where it is, we, we'll be pretty close.
Which is.
The 13, 885.
If you leave it at 13, 885, I may or may not see a supplemental, but there's no guarantee.
Right, yes. And I've always tried to budget enough so that I didn't have to come back for supplementals, but, you know, in the.
But I just don't want to budget knowingly or kind of supplement. That's, that's an accurate number, fine. If it's not an accurate number, I need to know.
Yeah, and anywhere that I. Assumed a supplemental would like absolutely be needed, I tried to put money in there for that. But this number, you know, this is a fluctuating number, and, and so it's, it's hard to, it's hard to say with that. But if we leave it at that.
It's not way off anyway.
We'll definitely look at it constantly and see if there's anything that we can do, you know, if we start pushing close to that to not, not to continue, you know.
And you can transfer funds within that, so you could, you know, if your auto repairs are down, you can.
Yeah, yeah, typically. Okay, so the other increases, and I actually did attachments that are underneath this category is postage. So the attachments for postage are. That it increased at the beginning of the year on January 24th, and then we just had another increase for August 29th. And we do a lot of mailings, you know, we have 20,000 parcels in the county, and every year we mail to. We mail by ownership and mailing address, so that's, that's a pretty significant amount, amount of mailing. Personal property, I can't remember off the top of my head how many personal property accounts that we do, but we, we do two mailings to those, the initial one at the very end of the year, and then. As we work them, their, their worked account, so just to kind of let you guys know what kind of increases that we're expecting for that. So travel. And traveler was just no possible way to go to a reduction over last year, because last year it was zero. Um. And in 2019, we cut $2,000 out of the travel line item. And we were able to do that because we've had a lot of staff retention, so we haven't had to do a lot of travel training. So due to COVID-19, we had no in-person training for 2020, therefore the 2020 actual was zero. If the world stops being unpredictable, we had expected to once again start travel for training like this fall, but they've now pushed those to webinars and things again. Um. I don't know what next year is going to look like, but we do have continuing education credits that are required for our appraisers. And those have always been historically in-person classes. Which means we have hotel fees, meals, all of that kind of stuff for travel that come out of this line item. Accreditation is a requirement of their employment. Administrative staff are also required to keep up to date on the most current legislative changes. Which are explained during Washington Department of Revenue classes. The majority of those have went to webinars. I don't know if that will stay the case or not. Last year, a lot of those were free. But. For the current budget, I would like to leave that line where it is. So my next thing is advertising. I took a shot in the dark, and we haven't had a lot of advertising since I first went into office in 2015. And my advertising budget has been $1,000. We have not went over that except for one year, which was 2015. And so I went ahead and reduced that by 50%, going from $1,500. It. Last year, when we advertised for the single employee, it was $278, so I, I would expect it to be. The only other advertising we do is for the Open Space Advisory Committee meetings. And those have been. We've prepared all the documentation, emailed it to all the members, and they've emailed their response back with a few phone call conversations, and that seems to work fine. Much better for them than actually having a, you know, meeting, but if the world does get back to normal and we have to do that, it's, it's like $28 to advertise for that historically. So my next thing is rentals and leases. And went ahead and reduced that by $250, so it went from $2750 to $2,500. And once again, this isn't anything that's within my control, that's our copier leases and that kind of stuff, but looking at the over the past seven years. I, I think that we would be able to, to do that. Our, our biggest bleeder is insurance. Last year, as we all know, this went up by 17%. Once again, this is totally out of our control, as far as I know. I mean, Lee tells me the number and, you know.
We get the bill.
Yeah, you guys get the bill.
Last year was even like 22% or 21%.
Yeah, I, I did a 25% increase in my budget last year. And. So I estimated a 17% increase for 2022, which would increase that category to 35,000. And I know it's not what y'all want to hear, but I.
No, that is what I want to hear.
Either that or you can take it to your budget.
No, it's because.
All the same money.
Yeah.
Accurate number, you're forecasting for the percentage of increase. I don't get hit with a supplemental because somebody was making a number too small to make me happy at the beginning. That's an accurate number. I appreciate it.
And unless it increases more than 17.
It leaves a shock.
So.
Hope not. I mean, it seems, it seems unsustainable in the, you know, the last couple, three years where it's like you, we cannot. I mean, you can't have costs that are going up at that, it's. I know, I mean, and insurance companies don't lose money, and I understand they're just shifting risk, but.
And I looked at my spreadsheet for the expenses for the last seven years, and it's, it's.
Yeah, but it's.
You know, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it was really high, like in 2016. And then it kind of went down for a few years, and then now it's way up there again, so. Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's a really realistic number, unless they, you know, really jack it up again.
We don't think inflation's gonna play a part in that, so.
Yeah, repairs and maintenance is, is very difficult, and looking over the historic, historic expenses. You know, we've had anywhere from $1,300 a year to $7,900 a year. The 79 was an extreme. Circumstance of a, a new type of vehicle purchased by the assessor's office that just couldn't stand up to our country roads. And so it ended up with a significant amount of damage due to the way it's constructed. So we have since, and that was a Chevy Traverse. It's great for appraising on the highways and in town. It is not.
Traverse very well.
No, it does not traverse very well out of the country, so we actually reduced our vehicles from four to three and started buying small pickups. Our first one was. Colorado, and our second one was a Nissan Frontier. Those don't seem to really have any. Those don't seem to really have any problems getting out and about where we need them to go. In twenty nineteen, we cut repairs and maintenance at the boards. I use the word request, but it was more take a look at what you need to do and if you can do that, please do it. If not. But we did cut it in twenty nineteen. And the reduction was supported by reviewing, you know, the past years, except that one single year that we believe we resolved by a different type of vehicle. I just don't see us being able to further reduce that category and being able to maintain our fleet with the miles that we use on it. The physical inspection was the closest to our base being Goldendale in the greater Goldendale area in twenty twenty. So less maintenance, less wear and tear, less oil changes versus, you know, the, the prior two years. So that's another reason why I don't think that we can reduce this area. In the rest of this year and in twenty twenty-two, we're going to be on the extreme east end of the county for the rest of this year. And then we're going to be on the west end at the end of next, at the end of next year. So for the rest of this year, in the beginning of next year, we're going to be on the east end and then we're going to be on the west end. So this is going to up our oil changes usually by about two and that's per vehicle. Miscellaneous. I've heard board discussions on miscellaneous. Miscellaneous is not really miscellaneous. Miscellaneous is dues, training, subscriptions, CEOs, shredding fees, printing and binding and our recording fees. Both in twenty nineteen and the twenty twenty budget process, I explained how current use and DFL removal recording fees were being processed in a different manner in the past. In twenty nineteen, for twenty twenty, we made no change to the budget to enable us to have two years of the new process and see what that was going to look like. The twenty twenty year showed we needed to increase this bar's number to cover our expenses. This led to an increase of ten thousand dollars in the twenty twenty-one budget. However, the increase is offset by the collection of the recording fees once the, the taxes are, are paid in the treasurer's office and then it is returned to the general fund revenue. It's not returned to my bucket, it's returned to our bucket. The bad news on top of last year's bad news was recording fees increased from a hundred and three dollars and fifty cents to two hundred and three dollars and fifty cents in twenty twenty-one. This fee is set by statute, not us. It's horrific.
Yeah, I wish we had a vote on that.
As of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, we were at around seventy-five hundred dollars. This is all prior to any type of recording fee increase. Last year's actual was twelve thousand. We have two options, which doesn't sound like you want now. We have to wait and see what the increase looks like and ask for a supplemental if needed next year. Or we can estimate recordings from the past couple of years and put a, an actual number in there. Continuing education courses all fall under miscellaneous.
Before we move off of that. But there is a subsequent increase in revenues.
Yes. So if you increase it in my budget, that's going to come over. Yeah, yeah.
Moral of the story, you think the fifteen thousand dollar number is correct?
Twelve thousand last year before the fee increase. I would rather see a real.
And this is the only one that I kind of left. That I I just left ba- based on last year because I, I didn't know what you all were, were thinking. You know, if you wanted this up, I think right now, I think we're like at nineteen thousand though, aren't we on collections for that? So.
It might end up going up, it might not end up going up.
And that's the revenue and usually it's, our revenue is higher than our expenditures because that's not true in this thing. Sorry. No, go back. Well, the revenue is higher because you're putting in the application fees in that same bucket as well. And the application fees, we do not spend the total fee on recording fees. So both the application fee and the removal fee for recording go, goes in here, but not all of it is spent on recording. So the fifteen thousand, I mean, it could be. And once again, this is only our third year with doing it this process and that's why I'm a little you know, with the, you know, a hundred dollar increase per recording. That's a pretty significant increase. And so we don't really know what that looks like either.
Just remind us all the extra hundred dollars does not, it
Buy some boats and cars.
It doesn't come to us.
That would be a Brenda.
I know that answer was just for
Other by control.
The continuing education courses all fall under miscellaneous. Our past yearly cost, our past yearly cost has been up to fifteen hundred dollars in this category. Last year's actual was only, only four hundred and sixty dollars due to no in-person classes. And also due to the Department of Revenue made a determination that even, even a class they would normally charge us for, since it was going to a webinar, they were not going to charge us for it last year. This year has been a mix of classes for free and administrative areas and fees for continuing education credits. So yeah, I, I, I still think that that fifteen thousand, I mean, it, it's, it's the best estimate I can give at this point with like it is right now. I, I don't like having those answers. I like to come here and say, this is, this is what it is, but we don't live in that world anymore.
We're all forecasting, so I just want to be the accurate forecast.
Yeah. So our fuel, our, we do receive all of our fuel for our appraisal and inter-county purposes from public works. We left this category at six thousand dollars. And once again, to reiterate, physical inspection area for twenty twenty was the closest to our base being Goldendale. This means less fuel, less miles traveled. In twenty twenty, with the COVID nineteen restrictions, the appraisers were not working for four weeks. And then once we put them back to work, we limited the inspections for new construction to a single pass. Normally we start new construction as soon as we get done with rebound. And so we might go out there and like March or April, and then we might go back again in June and July to see where, where they're at now. So March or April, they might be at fifteen percent complete, but when we come by in June or July, they might be at thirty-five percent or seventy-five percent or whatever it is. We also notified all of the new construction people, we actually called them and said, hey, we're going to be in your area in the next week. We're following COVID protocol. If you have any questions, you know, please ask. This also limited our time to actually be out in the field of praising. It's not sustainable. But we felt it was necessary because that was pretty much when you were not supposed to be traveling and everything, but we had to, we had to get our job done.
Are we required to do three or was pushing it down to one something that we can't do? Like if, if you run the numbers to see, did it even, did we make enough money off of the change in it from thirty-five percent or whatever? To make that worth the drive out there to these locations to see what we're seeing?
So statutorily, I'm required to inspect all new construction within twelve months of receiving the building permit. We typically go by more than once. And it's like, if we're looking at something and, you know, you can tell that they're work moving on it and it's going to have a significant increase, we'll mark that as a go back. But I would think if it's one that you're not really going to see any type of a difference in, we're not going to go back to that one.
And we're always receiving permits. It's, it's not just a set book at the end of the year. We're receiving permits every month. So we could be going back to that same general area. So we can check on, say, one we'd already been to without having to drive just to that one.
For a specific trip. Yeah. As far as, you know, knocking out the data to try to figure out if it's, you know, economically viable to be going back twice. No, we haven't done that. But we don't typically go clear to the east end of the county when somebody's building, you know, something if it's going to be a couple percent different or whatever. We lump the trips together.
And thank you. I got my blue cards this week. No, no, I, they seem fair to me.
Have you heard, does that stick to you? Have you heard a lot of people feeling they're fair or are you hearing the opposite?
Well, thankfully, the market is wrong. Unless you're not looking at papers or, or, you know, the real estate books on the shelf, I mean, people understand what's happening.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not going to complain.
Coming from a Portland, Vancouver area myself, I'm still not complaining. It's still way lower than anything over there. So.
Yes, ma'am.
The Board of Equilization has probably sent out about, about twenty inquiries so far with forms.
That's it. Okay.
So that kind of gives you a little indication.
That's what I was looking for.
Our notices were scheduled to go out last Friday on the seventeenth. Our mailing company got a little overzealous and sent them out on fifteenth. So we, we have a pretty good sampling of, of calls so far. So just to kind of, you know, reiterate, twenty twenty-two, we'll be in the far eastern end of our county finishing up twenty-two, twenty-two revaluation in the first half of the year of. So let me repeat that. The end of this year and the beginning of next year will be in the far eastern side of the county. And then we'll be in the far western side of the county next fall. So with fuel prices having risen significantly since twenty twenty, I don't see any slowing down in sight of that. And you know, I look at our historic costs for fuel and, and whatnot and I just, I just, I, I would prefer not to cut into that. Our vehicle rental rate, that is, thank you to Jen, who has the rental rate, we've extended the time out for vehicles. And we have been, we have been slowly doing that anyway. When I came into office, they were scheduled at like a five-year replacement. There, there was all kinds of circumstances on them, why the number of vehicles we had were having a lot of miles on them. We don't have those kinds of miles now. So I've been kind of slowly incrementing them out. But now there, I guess you all had a discussion on what you were looking at, like ten years, hundred fifty thousand miles. And so that's where Jen put them at with. So that, that's even more of a reduction in my budget than I have on my memo because that was done after that. And that basically concludes, you know, any of my line items. Do you all have any other questions?
Questions for the assessor.
We worked very, very hard at this and pulled out a lot of hairs and I'm pretty sure all this, right?
So going from your nine employees down to eight, you're still working on that.
Well, I, I think, I, I mean, I, I think we'll all sustain eight, but it's what that eighth person is going to look like. I, I mean, we you know, first of all, as we're once again, not in a typical year. You know, we're just starting really to see kind of foot traffic pick up. Foot traffic means extra like bodies that are, you know, needed to answer that versus being able to kind of squeeze it in amongst all of the staff on answering emails and doing it that way. And with no foot traffic at all last year, I mean, you can't compare last year to what it would normally look like. We're struggling uncovering all the time with the walk-in traffic and the phone calls and, and the electronic things. And then especially right now with rebound having gone out. But my, my, my goal is, is to run lean and neat. I mean, that's, that's what I, I know that's not typical government, but that's me. We, we just really try to. Because I think that a, a busy employee is a productive employee and what does that Mike always says? Something about idleness causing trouble or something. So, you know, we, we try to make sure that everybody is just really have a very significant workload. So once again, not typical government, not about Quikette County, just bigger government. So, yeah.
I did have one question that you may or may not know. It's just kind of history. So your past, it looks like you had a pretty good jump up in eighteen nineteen and it kind of leveled off in twenty. What was this with their in your overall budget? But your budget jumped eleven percent in seventeen. And I was curious if that was an employee or do you remember? You always had the same number of employees or?
Well, we have had nine since I came into office in twenty fifteen.
Just some may not have.
But in seventeen, I think we added like thirty thousand dollars to ours. Thank you. To our specific budget and that was for the remodel. And then that was taken back out because we didn't, you know, that, that wasn't something that we, I mean, we were not going to buy new furniture every year. So I would think that that would have been that remodel.
There was just a little extra jump. So two thousand sixteen, your budget went up eight percent and eleven, then back to eight and leaner down to five and then zero.
Yeah, that's the only thing I can think that would have been right in there. That's the only increase that I've ever asked for over employees, over wages, benefits and insurance. Otherwise I've kept. I've kept what's considered status quo, although it never is because of the increases. But that's the only increase I've actually added to my budget at all that wasn't status quo.
You know, necessarily specific to her budget, at some point we should have an overall discussion with my fellow finance folks. You know, phone expenses are spread across departments. Long distance charges are spread across departments. Insurance is spread across departments. They have control over none of that. Effective January one, we're pulling all the phone expenses into IT and out of the department. So all departments have some savings in there. Copiers are up for negotiations there in every budget. They're going to go up next year. People have no control over that. So I think a bigger discussion is why we've spread some of these expenses and there may be valid reasons. But you've heard everybody say, well, I don't control this. I estimate insurance, I estimate this as opposed to having it centralized somewhere. So you wouldn't be doing twelve supplementals. It would just be an overall payment. Maybe makes sense over funds like road versus the general fund, but within the general fund, I'm not sure.
Right. But on a side note with that same thing, if you're pulling the bills out and you're now paying in your department, the funds need to go with it.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm not paying this anymore.
So there's always. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm conflicted as far as it's, it's, you know, in the general fund, it's all the same money. For tracking purposes is, is nice so that departments know that you know, the phones are not free.
No.
They do, and you do see them as far as in your budget, the, you know, the, those general thing, insurance, it's not free. It is there. Now, do you have any control over it? No. And it's, you know. But it is also, it's from a tracking point, it, that's more of a tool for the departments and the electives to know. From the board's point of view, in some ways it's actually better if it was all consolidated. And so it's not a little piece here, a little piece there, a little piece where we don't actually know what that, we know what the number is because we cut one big check for the insurance company. When I see that every, it's like. So we know, but so I'm conflicted as far as it's a, it's a management tool. It's more just an education.
I've seen public sector, local governments take the power bill and the water bill.
That's, that's an extension of mine earlier, right? Which I begin, it's kind of ludicrous that it's like, but it is like the lights are not free, the, the heat's not free, but is that, it's not going to necessarily change your behavior if you
it's not gonna necessarily change your behavior if you know, it's like, ooh, I saw that copper pill, we're gonna turn the thermostat down.
But we still receive a copy of our, like, our long-distance charges and things like that. And so, you know, even if it was a centralized bill, just distributing that would make that.
Not gonna be a bill starting in January, it's gonna be.
It's all free.
Okay, so.
It's just a flat.
My, so.
Yeah.
Well, I, so this is important, uh, you know, if it's, if it's going to be removed from my budget, I have no problem cutting that money out of my budget, but I still need to know because there's a lot of numbers that can be direct dialed that is not a long-distance charge, but if you call it like it's a long-distance number, we're going to get that charge. And so the offices and departments still need to have that control or that information.
We'll talk.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I think it's great, I mean, I do, because we all need to be on the same page.
Maybe county sixty thousand.
Yeah.
What would be great is if you'd have brought some.
Well, if you had my day yesterday, you would be bringing me cookies.
You sound very.
Yes, I would, I owe you cookies, I owe you more than cookies.
I think there's been a lot of cookies flying all over the place. Yes, I, I can't handle any more cookies. Yeah, really, so other, other questions?
No.
I think, I think we're good, thank you, ma'am.
Uh, and my only request is that during the budget process, you all feel that you need to cut somewhere, so somebody please tell me before next year.
Yes, that is one thing, I will make a commitment that we, if we make any significant changes to people's budgets, we will make sure folks are, um, pulled.
Yes.
So they don't figure it out when there, something doesn't work because there's not enough, there's not a number in that line anymore. Or the lights just.
Or you're looking at your monthly and now it's a negative.
Yeah.
What? How'd that happen?
No, we have, ultimately, yes, I mean, we publish it, you should go back and check, but it would be nice to just let people know, here's the, here's what you submitted, this is what we did, here's the change.
That would be my vote is when we get done, here's what they submitted, she's gonna type out what we done, send it back to you.
Yeah, you're right, I mean, there is the whole big, big packet, but
Yeah.
I assume when we had our discussion, if there wasn't anything blaring, I would have been told.
Right now, we'll go and assume that.
I know. You know what assuming does, right? I know, that was a, that was a horrid word, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna take a break until ten forty-five.
Just let me know, I might have some more insight for you.
See, there are people out there. I know, they really did the spring tight. Or it wasn't working, just boom. Jen, I really like how you did this for the, so you know, thanks. Forgot to write my pad and started to write on him, why am I doing this? Thank you.
You're welcome.
There are people getting notified about this.
Um, that was.
Well, no, I think he did because I gave him the email.
Yes.
If they're fine, we would have had a picture.
There you go, thanks, guys.
But we can be flexible then.
I was looking, in case they were maybe gonna, they're virtually. They're not seeing anybody.
No.
Yeah, what you doing?
I'll go emailing real quick.
Yeah, and see.
Sure, I'll take it. And then I'll attach a copy of, of the detail.
They've added on and went up, but they also have that same add-up in revenues. Their revenues are exactly the same.
Oh, there's a chance there won't be here. All right, there's not much to discuss.
Like I said, it looks like the revenue.
More time.
Listen, we tried to bank the money, you know. That's what they thought, I just like, yeah, well.
We have a lot of time over the next three Thursdays to, yeah, they had a man back yet.
Do you guys want them? Yeah, do you need them?
Well, it's always good, it gives them an opportunity, and I think there is some things to discuss versus the duly money versus the per capita improvement versus not. I mean, it is, there is a, I mean, there, I think there's a discussion that needs to be had about the new building. The, yeah, there's a, yeah, there's a new building that they're getting.
New used.
New used. New to them.
They're paying the placement of that out of their book.
That was the capital approval of fifty thousand dollars, but I don't know if that just covers the, what part of it, I mean, that is my contribution.
That might just cover the concrete by the way.
So that's all, there's some evenings, that's the only thing that we have a discussion about is that.
And then you get my.
Yes, yes, it is small enough, it's small, but hey. We're looking for every.
Listen, I got a female asking me how much COVID relief money the county has received to date. Happen to have that or do I need to?
ARP funds or?
I would imagine it's all, or we'll have to get with this person to find out how to facilitate.
Today, ARP funds in twenty twenty-one that we have received, which is American Rescue Plan.
I think it's all fun, so that's, I don't wanna just throw back an answer since they're actually requesting this.
In the, in the interest of time, if, if, uh, why don't we, that's, I was looking to the clerk, if she's, if she's wishes to, I'm just gonna move us, we're next in line. So if you're, whoever's presenting all various care boards, we'll make, yeah, we'll, yeah, it'd be nice to get them in here. I, I understand that, you know, ten forty-five on a Thursday afternoon, you may, may not have understood that when we were doing it.
And I'm open if they want to do it at four thirty on a Tuesday afternoon, they're, they're barely.
They might follow after us.
They may follow after by the time they.
No, nobody wants, no, nobody wants to. That's the last show in the camp. Play by those arms roll.
I know.
I know, it feels so bad, there were so many.
They get scraped off by the table.
Yes.
Okay, what would you like to start with?
I'm gonna keep it in the order that's in your notebooks and gonna start out with the Board of Equalization. I'm gonna kind of start off too with a statement like Krista did, we've always been lean in our office, every budget, we've always been as lean as possible. And the Board of Equalization.
Definitely working on the mean part, but.
Oh, different, I say letters, different letters.
We're gonna continue, I'm sorry, I will, I'll gavel by itself.
You be quiet.
Found the mean part. Sure it is. Okay, and?
Board of Equalizations budget reflects a three percent reduction from twenty twenty actuals except for the copy rentals, that remains the same, because that's an actual cost, that we have no control. Travel has been budgeted at eight hundred dollars, and I hope that will cover it. The board members are required to do training, and we will be having a new member this year. And that is a two-day training, will they'll have to travel. Uh, staff, we're fortunate because the Department of Revenue is only offering online webinars. And I thought last year's was really a good one. So you can see where the budgets, like I said, were three percent except for travel and copy machines.
Do all the, the BOE people have to go back yearly or just new people or when they're reappointed?
When they're reappointed, they have to go to training within a year. And the new member training is a two-day, so you end up having a hotel, sometimes even a one day.
The appointment on the field?
Excuse me?
What's the term of the appointment, is it?
I think it's a three-year term.
But they only have to go to training once a year.
Well, they typically go annually just to keep up on things, because you get a really good interaction with other counties, other, other BOE members of other counties, so that you do really learn a lot. The Department of Revenue offers, like, their legal team is usually there too. And so they're always running all kinds of scenarios and, and they just really do a good job in training. Any more questions for Board of Equalization? Okay, the next is gonna be commissioners. And there again, I did the three percent where I could. We do have non-discretionary expenditures such as insurance step increases. And this year we have, this year forward, we have additional cell phones, which we've only had one in the past. And, um, Commissioner travel last year was almost nonexistent in twenty twenty. So that kind of changes, and I've tried to project just kind of a guesstimation of what it would be, and I try not to go over. I can go right down line items like supplies. That was decreased by three percent, and I also just cut out professional services altogether, so that's a hundred percent decrease in that category.
What did we use for professional services that we had seventy, eight hundred dollars last year?
I believe that was part of, um, Gorge Commission's planner position, which the state legislators, legislature did come through.
Then we paid it for a few months or something.
Right. Uh, communications now due to the cell phones, I'm, that's gonna remain at five thousand dollars. And travel, I'm gonna keep that, I'm proposing to keep it at fourteen thousand four hundred.
We cut it.
Uh, well. No, based on twenty twenty actuals.
We're gonna.
Right.
We're gonna cut it from twenty-five to fourteen.
Well, I'm, I'm, my budget's based off of twenty twenty actuals, but yes, sir, you are correct.
The next one's the one I'm curious about, and that's the advertising, you think you can do all that for six hundred fifty-five dollars?
Not realistically, because that's gonna depend on what type of public hearings are required. Uh, we might have a whole bunch of open space applications, um, like right now, we're working on a heard, um, they want to.
Open production, but an open range expansion.
And it depends on too what items come before you that you have to have a public hearing, so I, I would say that's pretty low, but I tried to keep with the three percent cut. There again on copiers and the cost of Zoom, that's gonna remain at eighteen. And the insurance, of course, it's based on a twenty twenty actual projected of seventeen percent increase for twenty twenty-one, and then I put in a twelve percent increase for twenty twenty-two. What, did you have a question on? I thought, oh my lord, what did I do?
He was gonna.
I'll ask the question. So in the, in the wage line.
It's a typo.
Okay.
I'm kidding.
Know what all those extra zeros are in the wage line?
No, those are mine.
No, the, um, my understanding was that in the past at least, commissioners were exempt from longevity pay.
I asked HR and was told that, I think right now you are the only one that gets it.
But I've never received longevity pay.
Well, that, hey, we cut that by.
So I'm curious about that as far as, I'm happy that I, if I'm entitled, I will give it back, because I've never.
Well, I, I had never budgeted for it in the past.
No, no, we've never, like longevity did, like there was previous, because we updated the longevity, uh, recently. But in the past, there was one with other electeds were eligible, and they got longevity pay as part of their, added to their, but the commissioners were never included in that.
Maybe the answer I got was based on electeds and it was not.
Right.
Does not, okay, I.
So I think you can strip the five hundred dollars out of there. Because it's, it's easy for me to give back something I never got.
Well, like I said, I had never budgeted for it before, and so I was like, hmm.
As usual, that's generally the commissioners' salaries are outside of the normal process for others, because we set them, so we can't give ourselves longevity.
Well, you couldn't have, you, you could have done more to cut.
No, sorry, yes. It was only erroneously, uh, given five hundred, so that's all I could give back. I want you to remember.
Any other questions on the VOCC?
No.
Okay, the next would be your left disability board.
It's not three percent though. I know, sorry.
This budget was reduced by three percent. Really don't have any travel expenses, mostly it would be like mailing out. And as a office, we've been trying to email more as much as possible and send documents just to keep, keep our expenses down, even emailing our BOE forums and things like that to people that have emails.
So for the non-departmental, it covers the talk to associates and water conservancy board. If they use it, they have an amount in there that is transferred to them if they need it. The rentals and leases for the mail machine, the color copy and the printer. The taxes for the state fire we control and parcels that are owned by the county and the professional legal services that are for the ongoing litigation from the prosecuting attorney's office. So this also has the interim program in it. So there is an amount that is not including the interns, and then there's an amount that's including the interns, because that would be something that if you guys decide that you want to continue that program. And the lobbying services, that was a contract that was done in two thousand nineteen, that was the grade, right? We paid it in two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, so that amount didn't change. The, the copier, printer. The, the copier printer maintenance, there was a reduction, I think that in last year when it was budgeted, we budgeted it high just because not sure, it was like there was a change and we hadn't, we hadn't had it for long enough to know how much those were going to cost. And we did do the 150,000 for the professional legal services based on the decision that was made to go forward in the TRAFTD litigation.
That was a bit of an interjection. There's other litigation that is also ongoing. Continuing.
Unfortunately, we always have some litigation.
Well, we're also taking care of the cost for the BTA appeal.
So the, we did have a reduction in the property tax because of all of the the parcels that were sold, so we don't have to.
We want to, want to thank the treasurer for doing that. $200.
Hopefully they'll bring in taxes.
Yes, and we will act there on the tax roll again, so it's a net-net.
I agree. So that was pretty much, that was all for the non-departmental, I guess that was just a huge one is, I guess, the interim program.
I guess I would add questions on this, is this the time we want to have the discussion about the interim program or do we want to hold that for later? I mean, it's a big budget item one way or the other.
It doesn't matter to me as long as the discussion's had.
I, I think the discussion will certainly be had.
Maybe you can even like at the very end if you want.
Let's do that, let's move on.
And then after everybody else. Is there any, anything on that one you want to change?
I think that's accurate.
Well, the historical preservation generates its own funds, so it's a management by our office, but it isn't anything that is given by any fund, it's generated from the document fees. So I did, it is growing quickly because of all of the recording fees, so it is going to be much larger than it has been in the past. So I did just anticipate if you guys get 5,000 next year. And then if you didn't, I just added down at the bottom that it would be, it would be $7460. So if you, I guess when it comes times for having all the submissions, can decide whether you want to let it grow or.
But I would also say that a good time to do that would be now so that if we did end up giving more later, it wouldn't have to go into supplemental and raise a bunch of red flags for people out there that think we're overspending.
It really wouldn't be a supplemental situation because this would be decided at the budget time.
We put it in here at the budget and then not say 5,000 and then next year at the time we decide to give the money.
Right.
And then it raises the red flag for the citizens.
If he's going to do a supplemental this time because the board made a decision, there was extra dollars in the fund. That's a little different situation.
I just, if we're going to do that, I wanted it in this document as well.
And it will be.
So then that board will need to stick by our determination next year.
Yeah, that's totally up to you. It's hard to predict who will request money. I think that's probably the hardest part because I don't think we, I mean, we never had a request from the cemetery before, so that's, so it's hard, I guess you'd have to.
And I could say we've never had a, if we have set that we're going to award, we've never had where people didn't ask for.
Right, exactly.
There was never any unexpended, we, in fact, I'm unaware that we ever even had requests that were not over what we had budgeted.
Right.
Choose or prorate or do.
I think historically you've always said, okay, no, you don't get this number, it's a little bit less, you don't get this, it's a little bit less. I'm just saying that if we are gonna, if we think there's 7,000 to use instead of 5,000, put it in the paperwork, let them spend the seven. If we say, no, let's just do the five and we can build some balance and see what next year says, then maybe do only spend the five.
So I, I'm seeing here, so we're estimating fund balance at the end of this year at 12,500. So we will be going into 22 with roughly 12,500 of fund balance. We're anticipating about 7,000 in revenue into the fund over the course of 2022.
There is a long-range component to this.
Right.
When the program first started, larger amounts were given out and that fund was depleted. And so we had to skip a couple of years to let that fund replenish. And that's, Iby's done a good job at making sure that balance is there and there are funds so we can continue with the program.
Right, and I'm fine with the 5,000, I just, if we're going to do 5,000, I just, you know, fine with that, I just want to make sure we know later that when we say we're going to find out.
Is there any, any discussion on changing that? I'm, I'm fine with the, I'm actually okay with the fund balance growing a little bit. I like to have something case, because we have unexpected and it's nice to be able to have some ability to react if we had some historical preservation emergency that was out there. I don't know what that would be, but it's possible.
Did we pay for the wall, that memorial wall?
Yeah, I think we did, we paid for that. That was kind of an unexpected expenditure, so.
Out of the fairgrounds.
Yeah, so it's nice to have some fund balance there. So if you're okay with the going forward with the five as far as budgeting, okay, let's do that.
Our next fund is, is the public defense. And there again, this really depends on the volume of business that East and West District Courts are doing. Your Superior Court is set, that's contracted. And we will go, be going out in 22 for bids to continue those services. Because the current contract ends December of 22. The District Courts, they're, they have not chosen to do contracts with their attorneys, it's all hourly. I think it's up to $75 an hour now, I believe. And try to work with the clerks and kind of get an idea of what they think they're going to do as far as expenses. You just never know, we try not to do too much. I think this year we might make it with no supplemental, but there again, I don't know, it just depends on how many cases are settled before going to trial.
This is one of those expense lines that we in many ways have little, very limited control because we're, we're mandated, that is. Or you can just pay it later, it's the, the, you know, that is something that the State Association we are working on, that that this, you know, intelligent defense is a state responsibility, not a local, why are we held with the 100% of the cost, that's.
And your numbers proposed are higher, but I'm assuming that's again last year COVID years.
That there will be more.
Right.
So the courts were fairly shut down.
Yes.
I think these are accurate and if we're lucky, we will do 2022 with that.
Well, first half of year's been kind of shut down, so I think we'll be up there.
Hopefully. And I do, I have concerns, but that'll be next year's concerns for the contract renegotiation for Superior Court, so. That's a later, which will be for 2023, so that will be.
I'm having enough on right now.
Yeah, 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 okay. Any questions on intelligent defense? Okay. Must have been enough to get the prosecutor coming here. Any comments on intelligent defense?
On the district court charging fees, those will be lower next year.
Those.
Will be lower next year. I think I filled you guys in briefly, but I thought that the policy reducing suspended license tickets, third degrees to infractions, so therefore they're not entitled attorneys. To several factors, one of them was the, I think at this point extravagant fees that were sought for $500, $800 per case. Those are now infractions, they don't get attorneys. I suspect that those fees of district court will be reduced about 50% because of that.
Okay, good, thank you, that's, that's good news.
Would you be, would you consider maybe reducing both those by $20,000? So your East District would be 45,000 and then your West would be 50,000?
I remember that I dropped 20 grand.
Yeah, I'd like those to be. Yeah, I mean, I could do that. I would do, I would do 20 of both. I would change it to 45 and 50. Again, understanding that if we're wrong, we're, it's going to be what it's going to be, we have to figure out if that's part of that adjustment as the year goes on, but based on the, you know, prior year, granted it was COVID, but you know, those are, those numbers are over that. And there was still, even though there was court was there, the defense attorneys were still meeting with clients.
Right, but on the exact opposite side of this, you just said that the expense of these to be cut in half, so. There's a revenue shortfall on our future.
No, the fees, the charge to provide the service because the items that were, people were eligible to have public defense granted to them, as he's saying is now going to be cut in half. So they won't, they're, they won't be given a public defender because they don't get a lien infraction now.
Right, but I think you said the fraction fee would be less.
To the expense, not of, you know, to the expenditure side, not the, which I understand that when you say B, you think of it as a revenue.
Right, the infraction side of it wouldn't play into this budget at all.
Yeah, they don't pay, we, we got no revenue at all for it, so.
Well, I know us, but I was.
Yeah. Yeah, them, me and the attorneys. They're going to receive less, less revenue, which we pay for, so.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so the flood control is funds that can be used for any expense of the county government, including helping benefit public schools, public roads of the county.
And I suppose flood control.
Yes, yes.
I'm only aware of one.
Washes out to the school, we're on it.
Yeah.
We got that. So it is, including public obligations of levy and drainage districts for flood control and drainage improvement. And the county reports to the state of Washington on how these funds are expended. So these sums of money are deposited into a separate account. There was no expenditures in 2021 and there are no anticipated expenditures in 2022. But the investment interest has been reduced quite a bit, it's going to be 120 for the entire year for a 12-month period.
It's just amazing to me how you can put 142,000 in the bank.
And get $120.
142 is 142 anyway. You've faded down worse than 120 bucks.
Flood control is one of our funds that is invested and we have really good guidance from our treasurer.
There's just no interest up there right now.
Try to maximize whatever we can, someday those interest rates are going to go up. But if they can sit in an investment and we can, you know, gather some interest, that's what we try to do. And all of the funds that we do have invested, I think we've got four altogether.
Okay.
Well, that one's pretty.
A lot of revenue comes into it.
No, no, and no requests or nobody's said anything so far.
And they are, they're, they're, they're prema, it's general purpose dollars that can be used for general government. Again, the, the title of the fund is, is confuses people because they think that that's what, and they're, they're just general purpose dollars. Doesn't have to be used for flood control.
Right. The next one is cumulative reserve. And this fund really is going to depend on what the board's wishes are. We do have some projects that are totally already, you know, in the works, which I've carried over. At community projects. I need to redo my memo, I don't think that's quite right as far as my community projects funds, I need to check on that one. Now, I did do a 3% reduction, like for the white salmon youth center, that was reduced by 3%. Now, I also did a reduction for the at-risk youth if the board wants to entertain that.
Is that, is the at-risk youth something that this board just does and not something constrained by law?
It's just something that the board does. It actually grew out of, where it came from was originally way back when Sheriff McComas was the sheriff, he had his youth. Was it, is that what, no, he called it something else.
Oh.
Yeah. Anyway, whatever it was, it was a youth, which he, we did fund a part, actually it was, it turned into a full POW.
The POW, yeah.
Police Activities League, and so there's, and so that, that program got eliminated, but the replacement was this, so we took some of the money from that and then we allocated it out to the.
I guess I would say my concern with this fund is not the supposed at-risk youth at all, it's just we have no management or control of where the dollars being spent.
That's actually not true.
Well, we signed the bill in the file less than a couple of weeks ago where one group bought a whiteboard and a backpack caddy with their, with their, and I don't know that that's really helping.
No, but it is there, there is a interlocal agreement with every single one of the districts that has what their project is. And it's approved by the board prior, we say, yeah, that's okay, that's an okay use. If they submitted a bill that was inconsistent with what the agreement was, that would be a problem.
They didn't, we signed off for a previous board to sign off on a whiteboard and a backpack caddy.
Yep.
It, it has to do with their at-risk, at-risk youth program. Because they'll have special educational type programs for these kids. And if that's in their scope of work, which they provide, and that's in the contract that you guys review. So if that was their plan, then yeah.
Right, so we have absolute control, but it's at the, at the beginning stage as far as when they submit for their
Right.
grant, then they say, here's what, this is what we're planning on using the money for. And if, and if the board feels like that meets the definition of the app, and they make their case, then we sign the contract if they, and then we're, we'll reimburse them for that.
Right, I guess my, my argument is, is it kind of the same as the white salmon youth center. And does this board want to continue that legacy and or shift of those funds into a different direction? And that's the conversation I want to have on that at-risk youth program too, so.
That's appropriately appropriate.
I'm fine with that, but it, it's a discussion that we are.
I did want to note also that the landfill dollars that are being used to pay back the radio project, I believe 2022 is the last year of the tenure payback.
Yes.
It started in 12.
Yeah.
Some of these figures I do need to double check, I I don't do math in my head, I do it on my computer. We do have our normal airport joint operating expense of 65,000. And also you can see that the federal FDA grant match for the college hanger has been carried over. And some of the transfer outs down below. This is stuff too that we can double check, like when economic development, natural resources do their budget presentations. Because those numbers I got from the director. And I've got a million for radio project. And then the 52 for capital improvements, I think that can be eliminated. But the Dalsport Water District, that was increased to 300,000.
That will be discussed later in the afternoon, I'm sure.
Yes.
The public works time. Are there questions on cumulative reserve? Yeah, that's not 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 ever, just not now.
That's true, yes.
Landfill gas improvements. We have not had any projects the last couple of years. We did have one, but then they withdrew and that was for the Dallas Port Water District. And so there's no anticipated expenditures right now. When there are expenditures, that is a landfill gas improvement committee. They're charged with and that's usually the chairman of this board and then the chairman of the Cletat P U D. And those projects are reviewed. There's very tight criteria for those projects and mostly, you know, it's all water systems and. Related to infrastructure type for communities.
We don't want a potential ask, but it is an unofficial ask, so.
And as of right now, we've got. Now, this was a few months old, but one million forty three thousand five hundred and eighty eight dollars invested by the treasurer.
You're just rolling their money over there.
That's his job.
See, you're projecting next year proposed interest return on the million dollars is.
Seventy cents.
One thousand and twenty dollars. It's nice to know that the like I could get I could use a million dollars worth of money and it costs me a thousand bucks.
I do buy three houses.
So not to get off topic about what the interest, I mean, I do think there is some movement a little bit with the fact, I mean, there is a little bit. We're going to have to be able to see it going, so they're they're talking, you know, this thing moves like slow, but there is.
I'm okay with it not moving because it's going to go, it's not going to keep up, so I I'd rather have them fake it like they're doing that.
Anyway, that but there is.
It is what it is.
Yep.
Okay, our last one is V R N R. And thanks to Jen and like right now in my memo, I had the tenure cycle and that's obviously changed. And so I adjusted according to the new rental rates that Jen has proposed. So basically, it's like three hundred and seventy two thousand three hundred and eighty three dollars for projected revenues. And then I guesstimating about fifteen hundred on the investment. So my revenues would be around three hundred and seventy three thousand eight hundred and eighty three dollars. And the expenditures, let's see. I think what that came out to be was a three hundred and nine thousand six hundred and. Sixty three. Now, I did reduce the insurance premiums by three percent. Yes, most definitely.
This came up last year and since we have people on the Zoom and it's being recorded, the commissioners, this is not for commissioners to be vehicles.
We don't have vehicles, just.
None of the commissioners have an assigned vehicle. This is cover all county vehicles or not all, but but the ones in the V R N R, this is not vehicles for the county commission. No, this is the fund that that we set money aside to replace.
Right, now we do have other V R N Rs whereas senior services has their own. They pay their own insurance. And we also have public works that they take care of theirs. So all the other departments within. The county, including the sheriffs, all come out of the V R N R.
Right.
And the commissioners don't need a vehicle.
No Batmobile.
Come on a side by side? I don't know.
You can borrow.
Walk side by side.
Yeah.
With your feet.
I stopped at the high road.
Any questions on V R N R? Nope, okay.
You guys can monitor these budgets. I hope you are looking at your your share drive because we do post. Budget reconciliations monthly on the share drive. And see how good or bad we're doing.
Yes, appreciate that. We used to get paper reports every month. I'm fine with the shared. There was a lot of.
You have a share grid?
Yeah.
Oh, gosh.
Nobody told me this. Seven months in, nobody.
Oh, yes.
You're just not to be shared with.
Your name was deleted.
We're still waiting for your security clearance to come back.
We've got an office yet. It's been seven months.
It's been more than seven.
I gave up my office to another employer.
Okay, that concludes our schedule so far. Is there any general budget discussion we want to have before we break for lunch?
We got nothing over. Over there. Well, she's probably.
Want to talk about the supplemental, the general fund or you want to?
Um. We have a little extra time now, so yeah, let's go ahead and do that. Current budget here versus next year.
Fund balances for the general fund and. The. Fund one twenty five. So. What I could determine was when the closing rule happened at the beginning of the year, mid-year, we're actually still without one closing rule. That the ending forecasted balance. Which I I can't speak to completely because I'm still unsure of how that budget process, you know, ends. Exceeded what was anticipated and therefore the general fund. Fund balance, budgeted fund balance exceed the actual fund balance in there. But at this point. The general fund.
Before before you go on, I just want to make sure we're I'm speaking the same language. The fund balance exceeded, so that means that when we did the close and roll. The number that was actually in the fund was higher than what we had budgeted or lower. That's. Okay, I just wanted to be sure because the way you said it.
Sorry.
It was confusing me at least. I have what was the variance between what we had projected to have as fund balance and what was actually in the fund?
I can't get an accurate.
About, you know, within a million dollars.
She doesn't like to do that.
I can't.
Numbers girls don't.
The numbers that I the reports that I've been able to pull with Tanta at this point just. Will be current amended budgets and trying to go back to and get those numbers out of print. I'm struggling.
Okay.
I I suppose that if you go back to the supplemental and I can. I would say maybe one five. But so we spoke with Pam to understand. How the fund balances. End up rolling up. Where they are and the county. Does closing rules as you've probably heard over the time of being here. It is during that role process that the system takes the assets and liabilities and rolls the difference up into the fund balance. That's done three times a year. Once the target, the first one is the target date of January tenth. The second one is the target date around May. This year we did it in June. Sorry, Brenda?
Actually, July.
July, July. And then the third one is is done after the state auditors leave. So that one still has not been done.
Was the audit's been completed.
Yes, so that so we're still we're still sitting out there without a a closing rule.
The most accurate number.
Right. Um. So at this point, we're looking at needing to transfer some money into the general fund and then look out of one point five. And some change. Um, one point two five is a reserved amount, so we need to, you know, get our unreserved fund balance up above that mark to. Meet the anticipated. Well, to at least balance out and then we have anticipated supplemental sitting on my desk right now. Of remaining of four hundred and eighty three dollars, so we really need to be shooting.
Thousands.
For thousands.
Yeah. And so we need to be shooting in the two million dollar range. At this point. And there's another supplemental that will be happening, although I do not know, I haven't received any information on who might be. Submitting a supplemental, but I imagine there will be some for insurance and potential wages because the coal is not being budgeted.
Good.
But I can deal with the transfer once we get those supplementals and do that a part of that process. The question before you is. Where do you want this money to come from? We have cumulative reserve funds. We have the fund balance there. What looks like eleven point two million. We have the American Rescue Plan Funds loss revenue amount of two point one million. I I just need to get it somewhere to go.
In. Correct me, I'm gonna look to folks that were here last year. So early in the pandemic. The then board made. Decisions regarding. Wages, you know, keeping people on payroll, trying to keep things as. As business as usual as we could, understanding that. We were going to take dollars out of the reserve funds because we said, you know, it's a rainy day fund. It's it's raining and I know. And if I'm correct, we never actually did that. We never transferred any money from the emergency fund into the general fund and so. And we talked about doing it, but I don't believe we ever have because I think we would need to go look at that because I'm not sure when we talk about that. I do, I do know, I don't think we actually physically made a transfer from one fund to the other, right? But I think what we did do was keep the landfill allocation whole and we pull, I believe that it's part of that whole process so that the.
That was a decision of commissioners.
And so the the landfill allocate, so who was supposed to get landfill dollars, did get the landfill dollars, they were. But no, but that's a different, that's that's another piece of it where that was the transfer was not, so we knew we were going to have less revenue. Beyond the loss of revenue from the landfill. So there was actually would have been two, like we were going to pull money out of the reserve to make sure, you know, because we did, we kept people on the payroll, we did. That was all budgeted money. And so when we when we kept the landfill. Right. Allocations correct, essentially, I think we did that because we had budgeted them in the expense side. Right. And so they were there on the expense side, so they needed the revenue. So if the if the general fund was supposed to get two million dollars of the revenue. It's still got. Instead of getting the shortfall, we gave it the two million dollars for revenue. Right. I I thought, but but again. No, no, I think that's I think that's accurate, but I don't think it was to the level. I think all we did was cover the shortfall in the. I I'm not going to disagree with that part. There might be some other pieces. But we had additional expenses as well.
Falls in the revenue. Are you trying to say that you've covered the whole ten point two or ten point five that was forecasted revenue from the landfill?
That is this year, the ten point five. Yeah, last year, it was the last year, twenty twenty, there was a shortfall, but there was an actual shortfall. In the, you know, in the second quarter especially, there was, you know, we were, so the budget was built, so. This money's going to come in from the landfill. So much goes here, goes here, so much goes to the general fund. When the second quarter came in, there.
The COVID quarter.
The COVID quarter, there wasn't any money and so we went ahead and did the allocations. Even though we didn't actually get it and that came out accumulated reserve, but we had talked about, that was just more covering the budgeted shortfall, but we had. On top of that, I believe we had additional expense because of COVID that we were going to cover out of the emergency. Outside of just covering the missed landfill payments. We never did that because we were like, well, we've got enough. It was kind of like, we'll figure that out as far as once, because it was like we have fund balance, which turned out to not be true, that our starting point. That we had, once we got into this year, we think was probably about, so we built a budget. Based on that we thought we had about a billion and a half dollars more sitting in the fund than we actually it appears that we did.
From my understanding, in December two thousand nineteen, when you adopted the twenty twenty budget, there was discussion about the declining fund balance. And then in twenty twenty, when the world changed.
Right.
Then when we were doing the budget for twenty twenty one, we weren't clear what the ending balance was.
Twenty was going to be.
Right. Good enough to make a a good projection, so it was series of unknowns, known unknowns.
Right.
Right.
So this is not unexpected. It's just it's we always knew we were going to have to true things.
So we did claim almost two a little too many plus revenue.
That's what I was going to say. If we claimed it and lost revenue and we're talking about that now, is that where that's going to have to start coming from so that we can. Light those two up. Right. I mean, that's the argument that we went through the calculations and we had about two million, two point one million in lost revenue.
Two million one hundred and twenty one dollars.
Right.
That or reserves.
Or reserves, which you're, you know, we're just.
Right.
Switching them. It's all it's the same money. It's just what's the color of the money?
This point.
Both. Actually, at this point, they're both the same color.
Discretionary.
Yeah, both discretionary.
Yeah.
Other than fifty six thousand dollars. It's not. So I guess that's a discussion for the board. I guess my question right now is, does the fund, you know, we have, you know, we have the the. Designated reserve, which is there to cover cash flow. I'm looking to the treasurer and the auditor right now, so we're not in any danger as far as today. Where we have things that we need to pay for that the actual cash is not in the fund.
Well, no, I mean.
But we will eventually.
The interesting thing, that's what I was just looking at because this whole thing is created because of the accrual versus cash issue that we have. Because I can tell you exactly the number that.
Yeah, what's how much cash do we have?
The cash at twenty twenty one at January was three point four million dollars. That's the cash number. See, that's the thing. This whole thing.
Right.
Gets down into here and so this is kind of our own kind of craziness that we created there, so.
The budget's based on accrual.
Because the budget is on accrual and so that's kind of the challenge is is that it's like, it's kind of frustrating.
But that's like a public.
Right, so so I mean, are we are we in in? Are we having a problem getting dollars is what you're saying? I mean, like if you go in there, let's hold on.
So we have money there.
We have.
Oh, yeah, I know. We have plenty of cash and we actually have plenty of cash in other fund, you know, it's just a question of. Right. We need to transfer to make the it for accrual purposes and where where are we doing that?
To make the twenty twenty.
To make the twenty twenty one to finish up the year.
Jen says to cross her teeth, all right? So like at the end of August, again, cash, fund one has a cash balance of two point six million. And that that that's kind of the weird part because I that's the number I'm not.
Right, I know. It's hard because you're checking against real world and it's like all of this.
Right.
Concern is all on paper. When you check it against what's the actual, there's no problem, so it's a it's an accounting problem, not a cash. Well, eventually.
Accounting and budgeting problem because we're accounting and budgeting for it in a accrual basis, which then when you get to the very end of that, that's how you have to go through that fund balance calculation.
Right.
But that's not the cash balance.
A lot of members of the public. Correct.
Sort of the differential.
Right.
And we are.
And we are a cash county.
Well, we budget accrual.
And I, and that will be, I think, is a, will continue to be a. A really good topic to discuss about how do we get ourselves, because personally, I would like to get us to a point where. We're budgeting much closer to cash versus all the gyrations, just because of this very thing. Is it's like, it's really, I, you know, we, most people in their personal lives. I have a checking account, the balance that's in there, I mean, accrual is a way of. I mean, some people do, but you generally, it's like, I, it's really easy for me to know what I have, and here's, oh, I have these checks that are outstanding. So here's, even though my balance is this, I know I have this liability out there, and this is what I really have. That's really hard to do, though, where you're calculating back into the previous year. And it's more, well, that was charged against when I made the money back. From the cash county, when you write that check, that reduces your cash balance, so your cash balance is not what the bank says. It is what you have, you know, that stuff, that's deemed upon issue, not upon redemption or not. Or, yeah, when I wrote the check, it comes off the balance. Which if I'm keeping my, my register right, that's what I'm doing, right? Okay. So, back to the question, so the, where do we transfer on? So we really, our only choices from a, from a budgeting or accounting is we take it from the cumulative reserve, or we take it from the loss revenue funds that we receive. I'm, I would take. Which is still sitting in. One twenty-five.
But we'd have to report on these. Rescue funds, so we'd have to, right?
So what do folks want to do, or people want to think about it? It's a big decision.
I think it should be taken out of reserve.
Reserve meaning from not.
Not COVID funds.
Okay. You wanna elaborate on that, why?
I would have to carefully think about my wording.
All right.
Not my baby, I guess, I would say, inherited baby. That's the way the previous board wanted to do their budget from last year, and that's the way it was planned to do.
So you're saying, out of the reserve, out of the emergency reserve. Understanding it's, it's all the same money, it's all in one twenty-five. Are together, I mean, they're all in one twenty-five. One twenty-five is designated out, if you look at the budget to be, so it's, it's got, let's say, ten million or whatever in it. There's six million that's allocated to be the reserve, then there's so much that's allocated to be the other, and there's so much, so it's, it's really the way we look at how we dice the.
Right, and out of which reserve you take it out of, that's fine with me, I I, that's not the. It's just, to me, it's not the COVID. The only money you designate officially or unofficially for those funds would be the financial software, they'll have another payment coming in May, and I. Doubt you need the money for the new software before May of next year anyway, I mean, so, I mean, that's only. Thing committed so far, at least. Individually, I don't know if that's a formal motion.
Let's think about it.
Would you like this as a finished business on next Tuesday or?
How soon do you need?
Next supplemental.
Hearing that, there's not, there's no cash problem.
Do you see an issue if this gets pushed out another couple of weeks?
I would say not more than two weeks, I would, I mean, I, I think we do, I think it. Actually, one thing, we don't, don't we have a finance committee tomorrow?
Yeah, yeah.
So I think we could talk about it at the finance and come back, we'll, I mean, I guess the finance committee can come back with a recommendation.
Yeah.
Ultimately, it's the board's choice, what the board wants to do, so.
My vote won't change, however you want to do it, it's fine.
Oh, you should never say your vote will never change, based on new information. Is we have a financial committee for a reason, and the financial committee looks at these things, and I would take their recommendation about me making any sort of a. Rash decision.
Well, I wouldn't say a decision would be rash.
Okay, uh, to your answer, yes, please put it on for Tuesday.
You could do that as part of our existing.
Why don't we do that, because that would be with a recommendation.
Yeah.
Would be during the, his, his, uh, his update. If the, I don't, I don't know, I think the finance, hopefully, we can come up with.
I'm sure we can come up with something.
So, yeah, let's do that, we'll put it under there. I would, I would make a decision based, once I get all the information, I don't have an opinion at this point. So, um, and with that, let's uh, break for lunch. We will be back at one o'clock for continued budget workshops, the public works, and then you'll end the day with.
How you doing, Dave?
Good.
Don't ask.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's a little on the heavy side. Gordy will be here in just a few minutes.
The reports that they have in their prior preliminary, like one-on-one. They're printed in under element instead of object, so that's how they're. Okay, so we have new ones that they'll be replacing, or you see this?
Good afternoon. We finished. If that was only true. Apparently, I blacked out for five hours, so. Perfect time. Everybody got their papers arrayed and ready? Whenever you're ready.
All right, so first, um, we have a couple of sheets that, uh, are replacement sheets, you probably already figured that out, they're stapled for your. Minders, and uh, actually recognized new revenue. So we received a safety grant that's uh, one point two million dollars, and so. Have to start working on it next year, and so we've added that. Back in, and then we also went back and relooked at historic records for timber. Tax revenue and uh, private harvest and added hundred seventy-five thousand. And then add. Blue, we added that to seventy-five thousand, so. And then a hundred thirty-seven thousand is for the uh, one point two million dollar federal grant. And then that changes also our capital construction on the second sheet, that gets adjusted for the. Additional grant revenue. And the harvest revenue, timber harvest, we, our plan is that we know there'll be an increase in our. Contract. It's highly likely, I suppose. I don't know how well the pages correspond, but it's one and five. I think we have some other ones too, but if the page numbers are correct, we'll, but you know where they go.
It seem like they were right. Yeah, they match our books, so they're good. Second page was easier, just to write on mine and change it out.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Just kind of a general, I'm gonna do the, the high level on the, on the budget or the fund, and uh. If you had a chance to read it, some of it may be redundant, and it may, I may explain things that might not have been clear. Um, but basically, Fund One-on-One is the road department, and uh. There are RCWs and WAX that govern what we can do and how we can spend those dollars. It's a restricted fund. There are some unrestricted revenues in the fund, and we'll talk about that a little later. Some of the timber tax and payment and lose, those are not restricted. So we're required to take care of our bridges and road network and maintain it, provide system planning for the future. Look at new, where we need new infrastructure, maintain and replace our bridges when necessary. And drain and other drainage devices. And we're overseen by Wash Dot. And the County Road Administration Board, which is nicknamed Crab. And so this spring, when we got our standards of good practice for following all the rules and submitting the right paperwork. We received the standard of good practice from Crab. We have received that every year since I've been here. So our revenues are, they rise fairly slowly. Gas tax revenue, unfortunately, the state, state keeps most of that. We get a small fraction of it to split between the other thirty-nine counties, and so. Things like that don't rise very quickly, as well as the property tax, so those are kind of like two big. Revenue sources that we have, that are non-project related, so no grant funding. Let's see, so we, we looked at how, since a lot of these are restricted funds, and they're targeted for a specific purpose. How do we try and meet that three percent, three percent reduction? And so we looked at the non, the areas where uh, we could cut that made sense. We're not gonna cut the project areas, because most of those are driven by grant funding, for the most part. So we targeted road maintenance and admin and operations. So those are the two areas where we thought it made sense to reduce by the three percent. And what's that mean, so we, we actually moved those dollars from those areas, because we have a large, large, a fairly large project. The Courtney Road project that's gonna be next year. So, um, we don't want to decrease construction, and so that'll mean that there'll be a reduction of two hundred thousand dollars. For the ass from the landfill funding, so it'll be eight hundred thousand.
What, what, you said you were, no grants for road maintenance and admin and operations, is, is there anything else for you? Don't need grants for, is everything else granted? Help me understand.
Yeah, so I.
Conversation.
Yeah, so we'll. Ah, yeah, we'll get there, yeah.
Feel free to tell me.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got them for two hours. If I jump ahead, just shut me down, tell me you'll get there.
That's okay, we will get there. Um, so that's, that was the three percent on, on things that made sense to look at reductions. The maintenance area is not a good one to do this long term. We, but we couldn't, on the capital side, we can't do without the revenue, so this was our way of trying to, to meet that. At least for next year. Um, because, and we'll get into the maintenance issue as well. Let's see, so cost for projects, so since Jeff and I have been here. You know, we, there was a economic reset back in two thousand eight nine, which uh, the. Price per mile for projects was three to four hundred thousand dollars, now we're up to about one point two million dollars per mile. So, dramatic change, which translates into, because our revenues don't change like that. But that just translates into, if you look at a graph of how many miles we started out with, we were, I think we did like twelve or thirteen our first. Two thousand and nine, you know, and now we're down to, we can afford two. You know, with. Yeah, so it doesn't go far. So that's the, that's the downside of that. Uh, there were, they were good days, though, we had a bout wave of projects that we pushed out. So, our planned capital construction budget for next year is eight million. Six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And uh, most of that is Courtney Road, I think, seven point two.
Seven point, yes.
It's a big project, yes, and most of that, or a lot of that is grant funding as well.
How much can I ask, this is not, I mean, it's. I'm just gonna ask anyway, yeah, when we started that. You know, when we started looking for funding, started that project, you know, as you said, your memo really represents five years of planning. Yeah, there has been, at least in my recollection, significant escalation, inflation in that project. Yes, it's. You know, when we started, if we were talking seven point two million dollars to build it, we probably wouldn't have started.
No, you would have said.
We would have said no.
Yeah.
And how much of that is just time, I mean, we've all seen escalations, but. Anytime it takes five years to turn a shovel full of dirt. The cost, especially these five years were really bad five years to having a project.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to get a sense of how much of that cost is because of the delay in us, in our ability to. Get the permits we needed, to be able to build that project, and is there a way to kind of quantify that? I mean, I can go back and look at our road plan from five years ago, what we estimated it was gonna cost, and I know it, it was not seven point two million, no, no.
You know.
I don't remember off the top of my head, there were other, you know, there's inflation, and then working with the gorge limited the footprint, so. Anytime you do that, you can't cut the big, you know, we still cut big slopes, but plus, we found, you know, sites, so now you're building other things that you. Right. We didn't. I mean, I want to say, five years ago, we started, we were like in the three and a half million.
Yes.
Three and a half to four million.
Yeah.
Yeah, what we were thinking, when we said, yeah, let's, let's go after, which came from, we had a big fire, and we needed emergency access. That's what prompted the whole thing, was that, you know, there's that stretch in the middle, the goat path that is not. Was really scary, when people were trying to go down and up at the same time, and. So when we got the million and a half dollars out of Senator King, you know, the appropriation, we're like, all right, we're, we're. We're halfway there, we didn't know that was just a down payment. Yeah. Yeah. The cost of, has gone up quite a bit for that project. That's the, I mean, I guess my point is, delays cost money.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, significant amounts of money.
Yes.
Yeah, and all of this, you know, go slow, do it, yeah. Do it right, but slow means money.
Yeah.
And in this case, at least a couple million dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Principally is coming from the road fund, you know, that we have to save it up in the landfill, so. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't remembering incorrectly.
What you're saying is that after we do this reconstruction, it's gonna be a while before we can build new beautiful roads.
Depends, yeah, not maybe, I mean, it takes a while to save up to get a project that's.
That's, yes.
We've, we've never done anything like this before.
No.
Since I've been here for a road.
Yeah, I don't think we've had a seven million dollar.
No. Closest was Fisher Hill, and they're kind of comparable to some degree, except for you're not dealing with the boards to mention it. Well, in the first part of Fisher Hill was back when it was three to four hundred thousand.
Exactly. Built a lot of roads for not pretty much.
Yeah.
How much of this seven point two million in Courtney Road is grant funded? Point two in grant funding.
No, 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 I can tell you now, it's. Two, seven, two, eight, and grant funding. Oh, no, sorry, no, 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 sorry. Three, six, two, eight, so it's almost half, it's over half.
Yeah. I'm off my soapbox, continue with your.
Okay.
You see, when I get my shoe off, it's our.
So really, three, six is grant funded, three, six is ours, and you're saying you got half that from King already?
No.
No, no, that's.
That's included in the three.
Yes. Yeah, we'd saved this money up over a couple of years.
Yeah.
To get this.
To get our.
That's why we didn't, you know, one year in nineteen, we did one project. It was the bridge, and that was hundred percent grant funded. So we really didn't spend very much.
Yeah, we knew this was coming.
Yes.
We have been saving. So the next thing is the, this is probably the easiest way to look at our budget. It has all our revenues, it's the year to year comparison, the sheet number one up in the upper right hand corner. And so you can look over time where all of our revenues, what they've been for the last ten years. And as well as expenditures and grant dollars that we've brought in. So for. Twenty twenty two. You can see the estimates for property taxes versus previous years, gas taxes, as well as the landfill. Request. And private timber sources, I don't think this, this sheet doesn't have our increases for private timber harvest or. Payment on here, but those would add to those revenues and increase that dollar. Our main sources of grant funded revenue, federal grants, so we'll get these safety grants. So we, we have done a lot of our new striping or upgraded, striping, signing, guidepost, all those kinds of things. There's a federal source and we go after that every two years. We also have through Crab, the county road administration board is probably our main source of funds for. Reconstruction projects. And that happens every two years, and so we try to get projects, and we've been pretty successful. Jeff's the master at it. And then cap funding is, is an allocation through. The county road administration board that we get, and it's for pavement preservation. And it's targeted, so it, that, those dollars go to maintenance activities, our chip sealing and our paving, small paving that we do. That's how those get spent, and they have to be spent on arterials and that amount.
Collector, oh, seven is in a way.
Yeah, so you can't do local roads, so there's no, there's no grant funding for local roads. You're on your own.
Yep.
And then you can see over time, expenses and admin and operations. Maintenance, construction. And then we do work for others, our other large sources, Surface Transportation Program, which is STP. And there's a formula for that. For what each county receives through the state. And we used to take it, it's about five hundred thousand a year.
Right around five.
And it used to be that we could, we'd save it up. And then the state saw this large pile of money from the county's hand that they'd save up for projects. And they wanted, they actually did sweep some of it, but they liked to sweep it. So now we're required to spend all of our dollars every year, but they will allow us to borrow ahead.
Yeah.
So that's what we've done. So our big paving projects like the Marlin and the Roseville Gray Road. Funding source for those, about every four years, we'll spend ahead and use up all those dollars for large paving projects. Because federal dollars are also the most restricted dollars that are out there. And so what was hanging up a lot of counties was you get hung up in right of way or some permit issue like wetlands or archaeological. And you miss your window, you can't advertise, then. They would like to take that money, and I think we're pretty close to them actually doing that to counties. So, and it's a significant revenue source. So we, we put it on the simplest projects, the pavers, because they're the easiest to get permitted and out the door. So this is pretty much on, if you look at the Kianta sheets, these are all the primary categories that you'll see. And so this is a summary of those. That's the changes that we made on the sheets we gave out. So the other, the other item, the next item is handout number two. And it's a small one-page spreadsheet, so it looks at the cash. So we, you know, we're a big, basically a big company, and we have to have operating cash to do business. For the road fund. So right now, we have five million, seven hundred, well, this is as of August first or end of July, we had five point seven million. And then we kind of summarize the revenues that we will receive. That's another six point six million. We have some cash reserve, so for the past. But we, we, my resolution is three hundred thousand, but we made a decision probably about four or five years ago to increase that. So if we have, because we started having snowstorms and things that are emergencies that. Significantly can deplete our ability to, to do business. And so we wanted some kind of a rainy day fund, and we picked nine hundred thousand instead of the three hundred. That helps us get, start the year out, and then there's something that comes up, we don't have to come back or cut a project or. Or make drastic changes to the program, and we saved that up, the extra six hundred thousand over about four years. And that's mostly through what maintenance did for us in cutting back during their, their project season. Also have, by RCW, we have to, we get a small percentage of the gas taxes, has and trails. And so that's, we have to spend it on that. So we have some sidewalks, and we've, we actually spent it to put a shoulder on Pine Forest Road from the city limits here in town. Out to. Foster, well, almost fostered the road, the, the golf course actually is where it ends. So the plan is, there's actually a trail plan for the county. And granted, it was done in like nineteen eighty one or two, but it still exists, and that's the one. Yeah, so we have these, and these are the funds that we'll use on the flip of that path.
Yes.
So they're targeted for that purpose only, and so that's what we'll do with it. But we, they're in our reserved cash as well, so that's part of that five point seven million. So then we looked at expenses for this year, looking at our, our paving projects and maintenance and ops. They all fund those kinds of items, and so we're left with that cash balance of one point one million. But if, remember, we talked about saving money. So we are saving money for Courtney Road, and so you look at that next year, and that comes out of it, and we're. Right where we should be, actually. So, but right now, we're, we have a little bit. So this, when I, when we take that out, and when we look at the Courtney project and deduct it, there'll actually be revenues coming in. So we're not, and we have that cash reserve too. So we're not scraping bottom like it shows, but it, I just wanted to show where those extra dollars are actually going. They're not, they're not just there because we want to have a big balance. So hopefully that explains our cash. And then a lot of, the other thing is, a lot of our grants. They're all reimbursement grants, so you have to expend the dollars upfront. And, you know, in the summertime, we have a few big projects. There's a lot of money going out the door, and we have to, you know, six, six weeks or so before we get reimbursed. And then a couple of years back, when we did Lakeside Fisher Hill and completed that project, the state actually went to wrap. They, it, it kind of depends on how much money they have.
Yes.
But when we did that project, they actually spread the reimbursement out over two years. So that meant we were carrying that balance and not getting reimbursed for, for over a two-year time period. So that, that hurts our buying power and ability to, to do business. So the next graph that's on my list is number three, and I think I've shown you this before. We actually updated it. So this is from, pretty much from the time that Jeff and I have been here. And, and that shows basically, so the, the landfill dollars are that blue piece of the pie. So those help us build local roads. There's no grant matching or anything that goes with that. That's what those dollars do. So. And then the gray dollars, that's our road fund dollars that were expended. Those are actually what levers those grant dollars. So basically, you're almost getting two to one. Match on that, your, every dollar that the county invests, we get two back to help us build roads. So, and, you know, I, kudos to Jeff, Jeff's done most of the grant. Work, and so, you know, we brought in twenty six million dollars over the last since we've been here. So that's, I think that's good news. Okay, so the other thing that, since the road fund is a restricted fund, this maybe gets to what's restricted and what's not. So the timber harvest, which fluctuates. All those things up there, what we have to do is we have to make sure we're, because we'll get in trouble. None of us want that. We have items, things that we do from the road fund, not from the road fund, but as part of just Jeff and I and others. That's work not eligible for certain revenue sources. So we have to make sure we have enough of those non. Restricted funds to cover those costs, so that maybe things like, a few years back at the last economic downturn. We looked at ways we could save money. And one of them was to get rid of the, not refill the buildings and grounds manager. So what that meant was that Jeff and I, and Susan at the time, took on those responsibilities to oversee that. And so there are expense, there's an expense there, though, our time to do that. And then the other thing, managing that curb and CDBG projects, those are not eligible for, to use those restricted funds.
And I didn't want to charge the project because, you know, we all know that they're, they're, the money that they give you now barely does the project.
So, and then overseeing the wish, the grants for the water, the gun range, Platts and Planning, the work we do there. Non-road accounting to help other departments, and then the system administration as well. So all those things, there's a cost of those, and we can't use the restricted funds. So it's, it's those, those dollars, those items up there, those revenues, those are the ones that need to cover those expenses that we have. And, you know, the timber's the one that really fluctuates. So if it's not, when it's down like it has been in the past. That means we have to use other dollars to do that to cover those expenses.
So just for clarification on my end, so the stuff that you're using grant dollars for, those employees' wages can be paid out of the grand dollars. As opposed to county dollars? And for buildings and grounds, which isn't grant funded, that's county dollars.
Yeah, so the route, so what we actually do is the, the, our non-restricted funds actually paid to kind of manage that fund. So we're, Jeff and I were paid out of the other fund, out of those non-restricted funds, but buildings and grounds operates out of the.
I'm trying to figure out how many employees you have that. Are based on grant funds. If we did not have any grant funds. How, what percentage of your employee base? Would be affected.
Is that in that one that? I don't think we did grants, because they're, they're so hit mess. Some years we have a lot, some years we don't. And some, like the pavers, don't take as long to bleed. Courtney grant funding and like the, the Crab grant funding is years. So we can, you know, we, the survey crew, they work there for, say, three or four hours. And the design group works there, and then when you go to construction, that group works there. We never really looked at it by FTE. If I had a guess, it might be a couple of FTEs.
Yeah, because mo- most of the grant dollars get expended for the project.
For the pavement.
Yeah, the pavement, the rock, the contractor.
County employees, for the most part, are being paid by county funds.
County road funds, yeah.
Depends on the project, I mean, it's kind of a mix, because, so we'll estimate, when we go out to construction, it's about, I don't know, ten percent of the project cost.
Was the design.
Is the, yeah, or the, or the construction administration, so it's, depends on the dollar amount.
But, so, so when you're talking about restrictive, what you're mostly talking about is road funds are restricted to only road use.
Yes.
So when you're doing grant administration on a non-road project.
Yes.
Whatever percentage of time that you're charging to that project can't be paid for road funds.
Yes.
It has, it has to be paid from some other unrestricted.
In the same regard, if an employee is out clearing brush on a road. That's an unrestricted.
That's restricted, that's actually, that it's charged.
It's a non-county road or a non. Road fund road, it would be county dollars paying its wage.
Yes, yeah, yeah, any work on the roads, our road and bridge system, they're eligible.
Or road fund dollars.
Yes.
It's just things that aren't road and bridges, so the snow plow operator.
Yeah, that's road fund, as long as he's plowing in the road.
Yeah. And when I say, when I'm saying road fund, I'm talking about road tax.
Yes, yes. And property tax.
Property tax, yeah.
And gas.
Gas tax.
Yeah.
Like that. Versus brand, most of our grant, like, I don't know that we get any grants for maintenance.
No.
No, I guess, I guess, let, let me clarify, there's a movement out there that wants us to give up all state and federal grants. What would that cost us in employees? Is that a better question to ask? That makes you understand where I'm trying to get an answer.
Yeah, I mean, we, we kind of have, you know, so if we, I don't know, yeah, that's a big hit. That would be a big hit.
Is this two thirds of our workforce?
We would do mostly maintenance. Yeah, it would be mostly, then you don't need the capital guys.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we would lose a lot of our office.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess that is the.
Yeah.
There's the. Yellow line.
Blocked is the point.
Well, I mean, as far as county.
It's not necessarily the road guys that are gonna be leaving.
Not the maintenance guys.
No, no, the maintenance is.
Yeah, because they're funding your own group and everything else.
Wouldn't build anything anymore.
Right.
Very little.
You build the yard if you're lucky.
Yeah, your roads would fall apart, ultimately, you'd have trouble with that.
Trying to figure out about two thirds of your workforce is those guys that are filling potholes and doing roads.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you know, how many employees, probably?
That's the next sheet.
Can I answer questions for the good here?
Okay. Just let us into the next sheet.
Yeah. All right, so the top two rows, two and three, there's a list of numbers on the far left-hand side. So since you can look from twenty eleven, how many, we had forty six full-time regular employees. And then in twenty twenty, we have fifty two, so we have added. And then in twenty-twenty, we have fifty-two. So we have added six employees. And so, what we did over time, this, how, pretty much what these people are is we have struggled to get flaggers and seasonal snowplow operators. And then, and then get consistent brushing. And so we made a decision to, I think we hired probably about five part-time people. And so several, I think like three of these people so far are converted those to full-time people because we could not find people to do this.
So those are your people of, I have a terrible high word. If you were told to remove five people, those would be the five people. Last in, that probably be the last out. Correct assessment.
Well, yeah.
Well, part of them are union and part of them are not.
Well, that's I'm trying to not say the wrong thing by, within my asking you questions.
Yeah, within the, so road, this is road fund people. So our designers, our inspectors and maintenance, they're here. So in that, in this fund, yeah. So the, the number below that is when we hire, because we still hire temps. So we hire temps to help mow lawns and, and, and then we're, twenty-sixteen is the kind of the high point. We actually got grant money to do work, that safety work. And so we hired interns, students, college kids and people from the high school to do what we needed them to do for the grant funding. And that's typically what we do. So we bring back people, part-time, temporary every year, plus our flaggers and our snowplow operators are those kinds of things. So that's the, that's the higher number on the bottom. So what we looked at was, you know, how, because it's, you know, we know that our buying power is significantly less than what we got here. And for lots of reasons. So what we tried to do was look at, okay, let's just take a few, a few things like wages and benefits. How wages and benefits increased over time versus those non-project revenues, which is, that's the stable revenue source other than those grand dollars, the project revenues. Yeah, so when you look at that, this is a cumulative increase. And so our wages increased by one-point-six million dollars since twenty-eleven. And while our, those revenues only increased by one-point-three million. So the graph behind it, number six, kind of shows that we're losing ground. Yeah, so, but, so this is just one thing, since we're, we have labor, we also have materials and we have equipment. They've all increased. So that means we do less. So we look at what's that?
We do more with less.
We do a lot. But it's not as much as we used to. So the next sheet, sheet seven, this kind of shows you on the materials and equipment side. So the road fund, we'll get to the ERNR, but basically the road fund buys materials and rents equipment from ERNR, the store. And so you can see over time how those costs have increased since two thousand and nine. And I'll let Jeff talk about our quarries because we've done a lot over the years with our quarries and he'll tell you why.
Yeah, we, we, when we came here, we had quarries everywhere. And they were small. Cost to have quarries cost more, but the crushings were also small. So smaller crushing, your cost goes up. So we, so we changed and we also, it's another reason we bank a lot, try to put money aside for crushing. So we have quite a bit in ERNR to crush this year. So if you crush, you crush a big quantity, you're looking at prices. For instance, we look at the three-twenty-five. Okay, when we were, when we were getting it at three-twenty-five, everybody else was paying seven, eight bucks a ton. It isn't just, it isn't just the top course and base course. So if you go out, you ask, you know, one of the suppliers, they'll go, well, I could probably get there. You know, I could probably get close to your prices because they have the profit and everything else. Where it really hurts us is where we would really fall apart would be, we crush snow sand and we crush gypsy rock as a byproduct of our base and dock course. We get that for about seven bucks, eight bucks a ton. Now, today, or last time we crushed, we went to buy it, it's twenty-eight dollars a ton. That's the big, that, and so that's the sand that goes on the road every year. And that would be, because the, the other people, the contractors can't crush that kind of rock. They're just not going to. They don't want that kind of rock sitting in the stockpile. They don't want, they don't want a bunch of rocks sitting in the stockpile. So while, while it sounds, people say, well, you know, you could just buy it from us, it'd be a heck of a lot cheaper because you got the cost to keep the quarries. It's not that way. Also, if you ever have a ninety-six type of flood situation, they're only going to have rock for what they got. And now it's going to be everybody's grab. We have the stock. Yeah, well, if you can even get it.
Well, you can get it, you can always get it. It's, are you going to be the top bidder?
Yeah, I used to think that the last year.
Yeah, that's, that's true. That is true. Although I never saw run out of plywood, I did see it run out of money. I asked for security with a load, with a unit of plywood. It was, you know, a month's salary.
So I guess that's why our rock, our quarries are very important to us. Very important.
So do we have a set, because we haven't crushed since sixteen?
Right.
So do we have a gas of what? So that's our last data point.
Yes.
We're crushing this year.
We don't, we kind of have an idea of approximately what it's going to be, but I.
Nobody told, nobody guessed we paid eighty dollars for a sheet of plywood.
Well, we, we kind of reach out to them and they, we've been told, you probably don't want to do that now. Because they're all busy, but they don't expect to be busy much longer.
So how's that work? They, they bring in the crusher into your quarry and crush as much as you want.
Yes.
Pilot here, pilot there.
Exactly. And then it's sitting there and then we use it. And because we have the buying power, we get it much cheaper for our projects and for our maintenance rock.
Yeah, so one of the things that we, you know, the, one of the advantages too is we provide that as a source of materials. So it kind of levels the playing field to get more bidders in. And we've had, just recently, we've had, I think somebody bid a project, they were the low bidder, they built it. And then when they went to get rock, the supplier said, no, we're not going to give it to you. And so they had to find it elsewhere. So this kind of helps for people that, that come in and help get competitive bidding for the county and keep our cost low. Because everybody can't haul in or doesn't own a quarry here that could bid on our projects. So it helps the taxpayer with the cost of projects.
Yeah, and it's important that they use our rock. Because again, quantity gives us buying power.
Okay, I think we're about ready. Oh, last thing. Number nine, sheet number nine. So this just shows really the, I mean, it's the million dollars every year that we perceive from landfill dollars as tax relief. And we, over the time period, if you look kind of in that center block down at the bottom. So if you add it up, we, we received since nineteen ninety-seven, eighteen million, nine-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand rough dollars. But we've expanded twenty-six million, seven-hundred-and-three dollars. So we've always used those dollars to build those roads. And there's, there's maybe what the takeaway is that the need is greater than what we have. So that's there.
Okay, just for my own, just so. What, what happened to sheet eight? That's the one I really wanted.
It was, I'll tell you what it was. It was, we couldn't get it out of the printer. So, or out of the computer. Yeah, so, but it, it basically it was to show that our, our buying power over time, where I just anecdotally said it, we started out three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars a mile for reconstructed road. And now we're one point two. It just showed that rapid increase. So nothing too exciting.
Alright.
Sorry.
Not ready yet.
What was the cost back in like two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, before the bubble burst?
That I don't, I don't know.
It was higher because there, I mean, it really did, there was actual deflation.
Yeah.
Because when, from the, you know, in oh-eight and oh-nine. And that's, that's why, because we, we got way more built than we had planned on. Just because we're running out to bid, people were bidding, you know, it was, it was a huge. Nobody had any money. We did, and we, and that's what we did. We built a lot.
Yeah, we did.
Because we, we got about four work, four years worth of undone stuff done in a and a terrible year and a half for you guys, but, but it really helped.
Well, to kind of put, I guess, a picture on it, we built, what was it, six miles of Fisher Hill, that upper part? For less, or about the same as what we're building Old Mountain today.
Yes. That was a really economical bill.
Yes.
To the point where we didn't believe it. We thought the contractor was going to declare bankruptcy. And there was a competitor, there was other bidders. Broke, I guess. And they, they did, they built it.
I'll, I'll cover the graphs. Gordy talked about maintenance and, you know, we cut, they did, they saved us money by cutting back on B S T. Well, there's only two, two big places that we get the best bang for the bucket. That's where most of, a lot of the money is. One is in snow and you don't ever want to cut winter. The other one is B S T. So the graph kind of shows a down climb. Some of that's due to cutting, but also some of it's due to cost too. Chip seal, chip seal. What it is. So what are the effects of that? The effects are, your system is just like anything else. It needs to be maintained. So our P S C score, which is pavement condition, surface, pavement, surface conditioning is, is actually going, is going down. So I actually included a couple of charts here. And this thing is kind of, like, you see the spikes and the changes. The reason that is, is we evaluate the system, we do half the county each year. So the even years is the east side of the county and the odd years are the west side of the camp. So our pavement is much better on the west side of the county than it is on the east side. The rating, I wouldn't have thought so either, but.
So the discussion why that is, but.
Well, some of it just hasn't been gotten to. You've got some of the longer roads that have, oh, you know, Pickleton Highway. We, we've brought some of those up over the years.
Because we have. I can think of a couple of them out there that single-handedly.
The west side of the county is operating better. Does that mean, the east side needs a little bit more attention than every other year? It needs two years to one compared to west side to get them all on the same grade?
Well, no, these are just, these are just the actual scores. We go out and rate them. But what we have done is some of our, like Gordy was talking about, we use a lot of our S T P dollars on pavers. So the last S P, S T P dollar pavers have been Glenwood Highway and Pickleton Highway. And those are both, those are both in the east side of camp. So they do raise the, so, you know, I'm not going to go through the whole charts, but if you want some entertaining reading or you, you could kind of look at the comparison, remembering the, the two, so one of them's from twenty-ten, one of them's from twenty-twenty. So the ones that are from twenty-ten and twenty-twenty are the east side representation. So I'll just quickly go, in twenty-ten, we had one-point-three miles of failed road. Now we have, in twenty-twenty, we have ten-point-nine miles of failed road. So basically, as the road, you don't want to ever get in the failed category. Right now, we are in the good category, average. And the twenty-eleven and twenty-twenty-one is the west side. That's the comparison of the west side. And we use the river as a split from east to west. And that kind of tells the story again. So I'm going to jump kind of into, I'll go ahead.
Before we get to the sixth year. So, so the thing about maintenance and pavement maintenance is that if I'm going to draw a curve with my hand, because, so imagine you start out with a new paved road up here. And it, flat, the curve is kind of flat up on the top. And as it starts to drop off, it gets really steep. So new road up here, reconstruct down here. So the idea with pavement management is you want to chip seal it. It's the cheapest maintenance, the best bang for your buck up top here. And you, and basically you just keep it at that top. So once things start falling off the curve, the cost to rehab and get that pavement back goes up to the ultimate, the one-point-two million a mile. And so I think a lot of roads in our county and maybe more on the east side, I don't know that for sure. We, we wanted to have a hard surface. We don't really have the money to build the base. The base is the most important thing. If you don't have a good base, doesn't matter what you sprinkle on top, it's not going to last. And so we've discovered these roads that just basically after a certain number of years is disintegrating. Because there's not adequate base underneath them, even if they're mostly used for cars, because it's the trucks that tear things up. But anyway, that could be why on the east side, it's not, not that way. Because I think there's long stretches of nothing. And we just wanted to have a hard surface between some of those, those links and connections. So I know we had that piece on Pickleton Highway that he drove through, that basically it's just disintegrated.
And just, and that's because of no basis. And in order to do that, you can't just do the top, you're going to want to go down it.
Yes.
Yeah. So that's why it's always, I mean, it's, it seems like it's easy short-term to cut maintenance to plug holes somewhere. But really, that's not where you want to do. It's like painting your house or keeping the roof good on your house. Those are the most important things to keep the house, everything in it, good. And so otherwise, the cost to fix things after your roof starts leaking is expensive.
Yeah, no, we can take a recess. Further down than that, I'll say five minutes. We're going to recess for five minutes.
Okay.
Okay, we've talked about the sixth year. I'm going to go with the, the first one, which is, has the full land built, the whole million dollars. And we've kind of talked about the first year. That stays the same throughout all three lists. Which is the B S T for Old Mountain, the Cooketat Multiple Use Trail, the Courtney Road project, the Rock Creek Bridge. Now, this is one of those grant-funded projects, this is S T P R. This one, we, we said, there's a, I think it's like a five percent match on that. So I don't know why, but it is on the painters now. So that's why the extra fifty thousand dollars for that one. We have a county road safety program, which is our signs, the one we're talking about, they're not going to get finished. And then the design portion of this, and I don't break these out except for just the first year. The design, I mean, I do, but I don't make them a separate column. The design portion actually sets us up for the following, for following years. It doesn't necessarily mean we're going to build it that year or the next year. It's just there. And I want to bring your attention to, okay, no, this one. So we'll keep moving on to twenty-three. And that's a thin road, thin ridge road project. What that is, is it's, I call it drainage. There's a couple of concrete culverts there that have been broken down over the years. We actually have a cone around one side. The, the road's starting to cave in because the concrete culverts are failing. We actually have a cone around one side. The the road's starting to cave in because the concrete culverts are failing. And those need to be replaced. Now, you'd say this is another expense we wouldn't have seen quite a few years ago. But you'd think, okay, you should be able to replace the culvert for cheaper than two hundred fifty thousand. It's fish passage. So we all know what that means.
Yeah, they're salmon on that road.
Yeah, exactly. And then we we have the county road safety programs.
Different thin ridge that I'm not aware of. No, it's the same one.
Pretty dry. Pretty dry.
Okay.
Pretty dry, but uh so we have that on there. Uh, we have the safety programs on there. Those are all federally funded and a hundred percent. So that helps us. Uh, Jenkins Creek Bridge, that bridge is every year gets hit at the sop, you know. It's not. It's, the bridge needs to be replaced. It really does. It's it's becoming substandard and it needs work. I also put on, as you can see, a lot of our area or some of our areas where we look, we started looking at the P S C scores for our towns. Our towns haven't been touched in, I don't know how long, long before I've been here, long before Gordy and I were here. Uh, so we kind of need to start maybe chipping away at those. Now, this is where we use the road crews. Uh, we would use the road crews to actually pave the towns. It's a saving for us as opposed to contracting it out. Um, the Sundale Road intersection, that's on there mainly because I want to use, I want to go for grant dollars on that. So to apply for grant dollars, it needs to show us a need. And that's the one at fourteen. If you've ever been out there, it's it's not the greatest thing to pull out of there. So and then we get into some more stuff. Uh, the other ones I want to make comment to that are different. Uh, that we've we've talked about a lot of these over the years. But uh, is the Adams Loop Drainage, this is something that has come up. This kind of exemplifies what Gordy was just talking about when he said on the east side that we just scattered some um basically, we never put a base on. The road structure is actually pretty good. It was built by a developer, county took it over years ago, but they never put any drainage in. That has since built up. Um, all of this developed with the last, we have houses all over the place there. We have to do something about the drainage. It's coming off of our roads, now our system. And if they put a house in that last open drainage corridor. Yeah, so one of the things that didn't used to occur was putting the drainage courses on your flat map. And so um if you go up to Adams Loop and Rimrock, there's a lot of cross culverts that, you know, if you're the homeowner, you know, you built your house and the culvert is just directed right at your garage door. And uh, and so people just built in all these drainage courses because they weren't marked. Even though, you know, you think that, you know, you might want to not want to do that, a lot of people just seem to do that. And so if we identify them, then there's a a higher chance that people won't block them. And that's what we've seen. So it's causing problems. And not just here, we've seen all kinds of things with drainage and are trying to make improvements to that on the plating process, but we're stuck with a lot of legacy items. Yes. Uh, the other thing we have on here, we've we've talked, we've actually had it on before, but we haven't been able to scratch together some money is the paved roads less than twenty feet. These are actually, you'll hear more about this. If this stayed, this is driven by develop our development standards committee. And we'll be bringing more information on that forward. I'm I'm really not going to, I don't want to, we're running a little low on time, so I'm not going to go through the whole list of this one. What I'm going to do is go back to the limited landfill one, the next one in here. Which what this is, is with six hundred thousand dollars of landfill money as opposed to a million.
Okay, so first one's a million.
Yes, first one's a million.
That is quite, I don't see the on here anywhere, so I'm sticking out second one, there's one.
Second one is limited landfill. We call it at the bottom, but it's six hundred thousand. If you look in the landfill column, six hundred thousand. And so to tell you what the difference is, if you kind of look through it, for instance, twenty twenty two stays the same. So that doesn't change. What happens in twenty twenty three is, keeping in mind, we want to take care, we need to take care of this stuff like drainage issues where the roads are coming apart, drainage issues where we could be flooding, be pulled out. So now we have, we don't have any choice but to pull things off that are related to paving. Um, not not our favorite thing, but something has to come on. So set essentially, the limited list is we pull off, we leave a hundred thousand dollars on Centerville Highway. And we pull up the tat, the Glenwood Towns and the other hundred fifty thousand. So that would give us enough to do a couple, you know, a couple of short runs in Centerville, and that's it.
Okay, so clarification, your your limited list of six thou- six hundred thousand is essentially a million the first year and six hundred thousand after that.
Eight hundred thousand the first year.
Okay.
On all of them. That's six hundred thousand every year, but it has a ripple effect because it pushes projects back. And essentially what that does is it starts, you know, it's you start, for instance, um, you know, it, yeah, just start shoving things backwards for us. And it makes it very tough to do some of these. Jenkins Creek is on here. Um, and I tried to keep it on because it's one of the last, it is the last project years ago before we got here. For Gordy and I got here, there was a meeting with the with the timber companies and the board about doing certain roads. Jenkins Creek is the last road. To make all weather roads so they could haul out in winter time. And Jenkins Creek is the last road that has that now. W P T maybe selling off their property? If they are, that we're going to get a different push. Because now nobody can do anything with it, because the road is substandard. So.
For development.
For development purposes.
A twenty foot wide?
No, it's not.
No.
Yeah, so subdivision beyond the first part. We, it'll be a hindrance like some of our other roads. Diary Road and a Child's Road.
Yeah.
Situation.
How large is that bridge?
The bridge is probably adequate, but it's uh um the footing, it's seen erosion, and so we were eroded down, so there are issues with the footing. And then the width, I think we're, I don't know, we might be twenty, maybe.
Yeah, it's close, it's close.
But it's not long enough to receive uh RAC funding.
No.
It's on us.
Yeah.
And like Gordy said, the the bigger thing is the erosion, another flood, we could have bigger issues, and that's the only way out of there. So um, yeah, we have those, and like you said, it kicks it, it kicks it down. I want to go to the last list.
Bridge in Glenwood, that is, so it's too short, so it doesn't, there's no federal dollars.
No, it doesn't qualify either. And I tried to keep the bridge in Glenwood on again, uh, just because it is a bridge. And it does need to be replaced. We have some flood, backup flooding into the post office over there. We have had. Um, so yeah, that one's.
Short span that's not.
No, those aren't eligible. Those aren't eligible. I do want to, before you get too carried away, I do want to call out a couple of our projects that are, and you see them on here, but like Lower Spring Creek, that's a federal, that's anticipating if we ever get a federal grant. It's, you know, without federal grants, we don't do the project, that project. Um, the Sundale Road, that's in twenty twenty five, and we just got the last, we applied for that back in
Three years ago, four years ago?
Yeah, four years ago. That that's how long it takes to get the funding for those RAC projects. That'd be how long it takes before they'll pay us back. We could do it, but then we have to carry the dollars. Our S T P, like Gordy said, we go out about four years or so. Those are our S T P projects that we would be looking at, and they're over in Pickleton. East Road and Market Street, Pickleton. And then, of course, Pickleton Highway between Woodland and Old Mountain. Also on there is the Pickleton Highway piece that everybody likes over by uh Soda Springs that's coming apart, and I have that program to do with our crews. Because, well, let me back it. I have a program to go to bid if we do it with the, if we have the million dollars. If we don't have the million dollars, limited, we break it up. And with none, we break it up even further. And essentially, we would turn it to gravel and they'd be driving. It'd be like we did it duly. We'd break it up to a section. They drive and gravel for a few years.
Then we have enough money to pay them.
Yes, we have enough money to put it back together. We, it would be three years or so of instruction. So if we go to no landfill, things look considerably different. Again, we end up with just the stuff that we have on there. Are, we we lose all our town paving, so we we basically lose all this because we don't have the the money to pay for it. Also, we lose our less than twenty foot roads goes away. Because, I mean, you could tell me we could do something different, but I I don't, I wouldn't recommend not doing thin ridge or not doing Adams Loop or pushing the bridges off, or just taking them off the the thing completely. Because that's what happens when you go to none, like I think Jenkins Creek's actually falls off. Now, look at there, I got it at twenty twenty seven, but that's only half of it, so. Jenkins Creek Bridge is still there, but the road itself is actually, while it's on twenty twenty seven, it means that's still not enough funding. We'd have to accumulate some funding to do it in twenty eight. And Glenwood Bridge, I just, I can't find, I just, I tried, I can't get it in there. Unless we decide to push off Pickleton Highway in that Soda Springs area, and that will be gravel by that time.
How uh, how much do you actually anticipate for the Glenwood Bridge? It's showing up here at twenty, or that's just the design?
That's just the design. So I think it's about six fifths. If I remember correctly.
Because in one limited, it's case for it the last.
Yeah, it's six twenty, six twenty. Yeah, so the the challenge, the challenge is, is that we're still trying to match grant projects. And I mean, those are where we're going to get the best bang for our dollar. Um, so that may push other things out.
Yeah.
We can get those grants, you know, we want to continue to get the RAC grants because that's really, that's really the biggest source. There isn't anything else that does that kind of work. And uh, so that means that all of our million dollars that we have from the road fund to put into capital, that's what it'll do in any given year, and it may take multiple years for us to save up to have enough, depending on the size of the project and what inflation does to us over the next decade. So um I think that's our challenge. So a lot of these other projects, they won't, we won't, they won't get that.
Yeah.
There's just no money for them, uh, because that's the way it is. So um, but there may be an option. And that, you may not like the option, though. So there's a uh, I'll let, maybe somebody else can help me out.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. So there's a thing called the Transportation Benefit District that's allowed under R C W. Basically, it's a fee that goes on your car tabs for local jurisdictions. There are a lot of cities in our state that use it. One county, one county has formed one completely, and they have all their paperwork and resolutions that.
Which county was it?
Thurston, where I came from, but they they never moved.
Okay, we're done here.
They they tried. There are a lot of other, I think there's about six counties that tried um to form it, never formed it. Um, and Thurston actually did, but they never put the fee on. They didn't need to. They they thought they were going to have to back in uh the last economic downturn. And so they were moving that direction, but uh, so they still have the district, it's formed, actually report on it every year, but they didn't, they do nothing with it. So basically what it is, it's a, um, you start out and it's a, you can have a, you have to have hearings to form the district. And uh, then the district has a board. And the board uh decides what projects would get, need to get funded by a, you start out with a twenty dollar car tab fee. And in two years, you could increase it to forty. So for us, that's around four hundred thousand dollars for the twenty, twenty dollar car tab. Uh, we have about, we went to ask licensing how many registered vehicles there were, and there's um about twenty thousand licensed vehicles in our county. So the the one, uh, so cities obviously can do this too. So you have to, if you're, if a county is going to form it, they have to ask the cities if they want to participate. And then they have a share on that board for making decisions with projects. So there's four hundred thousand available. Um, and but they get a percentage based on, you know, the drivers.
Right there.
So they're, yeah.
Jurisdiction.
Yeah. So they might have one representative, there's three here, you know, that it's kind of a help.
Clarification, if there's four hundred thousand raised in, say, all three cities on our board, does that mean they get two hundred thousand of those dollars gets sent inside their city limits, and we only give the twenty for non?
No, it's it's the board. I I haven't looked, I know that they, you can decide what, you can decide what projects get on the list. They can be a, have a share of a vote in that, depending on how many the licensed vehicles are within those jurisdictions. And I don't know if you can just do a cash, so with our S T P dollars, that's one thing we didn't talk about.
Yeah, that's true.
Um, they're kind of for the county, and the county includes the city. So what we do, we have a formula, and I didn't bring that. Uh, we have a formula that basically is by population and road mile, no arterial. And uh, so we're like ninety percent. So if we get a million dollars, the county gets nine hundred thousand. The rest, that one hundred thousand gets divided up between the cities by population and arterial miles. So and that, you know, I don't know if we could do the Transportation Benefit District like that. Um, but if we did, I think that I calculated it out just based on that, it's about four hundred and sixty or three hundred and sixty thousand dollars goes to the county, and the rest gets divided up if if we could do that. I don't know, I have to go back through the R C Ws and figure it out, but I know, uh, the way Thurston's is set up, the the cities actually decline, but they would have a vote on or percentage of a vote on that uh board. So it's possible. So the the twenty dollar car tab, once you have the hearings to form the district, that fee just gets implemented. It's not voted on by the public, although you would talk about it in your hearing, and that's where you're heading. Um, and then you can raise it to forty dollars, which would double that amount after two years of having the twenty dollar fee. And then anything beyond the forty dollars uh has to be, let's see, I think it says, you, it has to be voted on or it's subject to
Death of elected.
Potential referendum.
My counter for a while.
Yeah.
Yeah. So anything greater than forty is subject to a potential referendum.
Add it to the recording fees.
So you can, you can piss a whole bunch of people off for a third of a mile.
Yeah, but the money, yeah.
Per year, per year. You have a third of the mile with the road, it'll make a bunch of people hang here.
So that's, that is an option available to counties.
Well, thank you for presenting that option, sir.
Yeah. Well, that that's true for all of our stuff. I mean,
Oh, yeah.
You know, our, you know, had the planning and reviews on those kinds of things, and most of our permits are no fee permits.
Yeah. Do we have um easement all the way along Jacob Street?
I'm pretty sure we don't.
So we're gonna, we if we do that road overlay, we're gonna have to go and buy.
Yes, that the price includes all of that. Because that's why it's spread over the years, so we would buy, one year we buy right away to do the sign. And the final year you do the construction.
So there's thirteen parcels back there with houses on them?
Right away, I hope not. Well, yeah, you would spend a million to build it, yes.
Yeah, it was part of the, the all-weather roads for haul routes.
Yes, cause it's an industrial. Because.
Farmed a market for the timber industry.
Yeah.
This year, we're gonna have a.
But they're not kicking anything to kitty for it, alright.
Oh, no, they never, no.
At some point this year, we're gonna have a six-year road plan.
Yes.
Which could be, you know, the six-year road program is on hiatus for two or four years. Until we.
Build up some money.
Or the six, six years begins. Thank you. We don't really need any projects for three or four years. Because we're just, you know, depending on what we end up doing, our current things that we have programmed. There's, there's not gonna be any capacity to add anything to the six-year road program.
I'm wish you would move something else because you'd be something more necessary.
Yes, and that's possible. That, that is certainly possible. We, I mean, it's, it's. You know, the only thing that we always are absolutely is things that, you know, next, you know, we've already done the design work. We've already done. We're prepped and ready, cause we don't build roads in one year. There are multiple years. So you can start looking at stuff out further as far as reprioritizing. We've always really resisted doing that. It's kinda like once something's on there, it's on there, uh, cause it's otherwise, but there's nothing that says you can't.
No.
And why not have even more chaos? That would be fine, but. Okay, continue with sheet number one. Yes, we re, we restart. Okay, um, so, uh, ER and R Fund five oh four. Um, so basically, um, ER and R, every county has to have one. They're established by RCW. And, uh, there are lots of rules for, um, their operations, but basically. Um, it's the store and the rental company for road. And it also provides fuel, uh, fuel depots that the whole county can use. Well, the county as a function, not everybody in the county can use and purchase fuel. Uh, so we talked about fuel before, um, but basically it's, uh. It has to support itself. Doesn't make money, but it has to cover the cost of having the store there. And so the road fund buys all their, their equipment. So when you look at the road fund budget. Uh, for maintenance especially versus ER and R fund. Um, they really mirror each other because the store is providing everything for the, uh, the work that the road crew do every year. So the, the sheet that I handed out handed, sheet one, it kinda covers just a general. Uh, how the ER and R works and what it does, a little more information for you. Um, but, uh, basically, um, next year's equipment that we're gonna purchase. And the other thing that ER and R does is crush rock. So we, it goes from having the, a lot of cash available. Um, to a big pile of rock that is an asset on the ground. Um, and then it kinda works its way out and then we do it all over again. So it, right now it has maybe a few more dollars than normal.
Yes.
So equipment purchases, we purchase, uh, try to purchase and replace our equipment. Um, the heavy equipment is the most expensive, obviously. Um, we have a, a twenty-year plan for all of our equipment, actually thirty-year, because some of our equipment we keep longer. Like our loaders and our quarries, those kinds of things. They just, they don't get used as much, but you have to have them. Um, so they last a long time. But we're gonna buy a grader, um, next year and for pickups and that's six hundred thousand dollars. So it's, you know, and now we're not even sure when we're gonna get pickups.
Buy a grader or a small country.
Yeah, so anyway, we'll spend, you know, six hundred to a million or more on equipment. Uh, usually, we haven't spent a million in a while, but, um, you know, graders four hundred thousand, three to four hundred thousand dollars. We actually tried to save money about eight years ago or more, or longer on, uh, purchasing Volvo graders. But they were not built the same as other more expensive graders.
That would be a good example. They weren't the, they weren't the ones that had the steering issue, that. That's why we ended up going.
Going right, cause we had the. Drove themselves off the road.
Yeah, that was bad.
Yeah.
And then obviously fix that.
And you can actually, this year, I think is first year you can get them with the steering.
Yes, they're brought it back.
So we're not, we don't wanna be the first again though, so we'll make sure they work. Even with the new steering.
Should be old technology, you would think.
Yeah, we have to make it better.
Yes.
Electronic, it's not a mechanical thing anymore. Let's see. So I don't know if you have questions on that. Like I said, it mirrors what road does and it's, uh. Uh, but three, one oh three is the GIS fund. So we have a, uh. Well, the fund includes managing the graphic information system for the county. Um, whether you work in the county or you're out of the county or even out of the state or around the world somewhere, everybody can access. Um, the data that's there and people do. It's, uh, funded, uh, through landfill dollars. And, uh, Kim Gleason was the one that developed that for us. She has. Partially retired and, uh, so she still works a few hours in a, a week. And, uh, and is helping train the person that we hired to. Take the place. And so, um, so right now there's, you know, two people that actually charge there somewhat. You can see we have twenty-five thousand dollars proposed wages seventeen as benefits. And then we have below that in, uh, twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two estimate, sorry. Sixteen thousand per wages, eleven five for, um, benefits. And then we have. We decided several years ago, uh, we, after bouncing around with our system where it got housed and managed. An outside company that basically hadn't changed their fee for a long time. And so, um, anyway, our rate's pretty decent. So for seventy-two hundred bucks, they manage that, all the hardware to. Keep our system up and running. They've actually done lots of upgrades, like to get the thing available on your phone and your mobile device. Uh, so you can actually use it in the, in the field from any mobile device. Works a little better on your computer on a hard, hard line, but it's, uh, it functions well enough. Um, then we have, uh, licensing GIS, ArcGIS licenses that we have to renew. That's paid for out of the fund. And then, uh, there's ten thousand dollars for training. And that's to help train. I don't know that, uh. It's been a struggle to get training. So in twenty twenty, we didn't do much of anything and I don't think anybody did. Even this first part of twenty, this year, uh, there wasn't a lot available, but things are opening up. So, um, we're getting more formal training as well as Kim's training and just on-the-job training for our new GIS person.
So we, it, do we anticipate the fifteen thousand we had budgeted for twenty-one? Is that where you extend all of that? It's gonna, it's real, so really the part of the ten is just carrying forward. To say yes, she says yes. Giving it back, but asking for it back.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
That's the point I'm making is we're not actually spending twenty-five thousand on training for a kid replacement here right now.
No. No. Um, and then Kim's time and all of our time, so GIS, um. Anything that road needs from GIS for Kim to do. Road pays for that.
We already paid for it, so it doesn't come off.
So, so this is a, uh, and it, our budget's an estimate for hours, you know, based on historical work by Kim. Uh, the stuff that Kim does for the auditor, the assessor and others, that's what gets paid for out of this fund. And then the public's inquiries and requests as well. So this, only what needs to be paid for by those outside people get charged to the fund.
What's the little note on the side for six thousand dollar website improvements?
That was, that, that was the last, um, time that we had to pay that for this year. So it was, uh.
Aerial photos.
Area photos, yeah.
Yeah, so every once in a while we'll ask for something new if, um, we, you know, we think something needs to be done, like. Um, the mobile device, so the company that we house our stuff on, they'll, they'll help us. And they have programmers that, uh, they'll give us a cost and we'll. I think we've done it the last couple of years. So we, this is the end of the cycle. Before that, um, it's, you know, it's probably, there's a big gap, maybe five years, six years. So we usually find somebody that's flying it. The state continues to fly pretty regularly and so.
We get a good.
Yeah, we'll piggyback on their flight and, and just purchase the photos. So that's how we, that's how we operate.
A lot of Kim, the majority of Kim's time this year talking to her was updating our plat, our maps. On the site because of all the development, the short class and all that's boundary line adjustments. Every time those go through, she updates the maps.
Alright, so the next fund today and the last one. So our agreement with, uh, the PUD who manages our, our sewer treatment plant in Dallas Port, which was built about two thousand and one and two. And they, uh, been, the city of Benjin managed it for the first few years of its life. And then, uh, about two thousand and eight, uh, an agreement was reached to have the PUD take it over. And manage the operations of it. Operations and maintenance. So that's what's been occurring, um, since I've been here. And, uh, unfortunately their budgeting is a little different than ours. And so usually in October, um, we'll receive their actual numbers. So if you look, um. Just in general, cause I'm gonna let Jeff talk about it. But, uh. He one is there, this is what they give us every year for this is their budget and then we put this into, um, Kaiyanta. So this is this year's budget. That's what we do every year, um, cause that's all we have and we won't get the real numbers until middle of, uh, October. So this is their operating. So the, the fees that they collect cover the operating expense. And Jeff, probably not today, uh, but at some point in the future, we'll talk about, uh, rates. Because the decision was made when the plant for the project was completed, the system came up and running. Was that they were just gonna charge a fee based on operating expense, no capital. Um, expenditures for the future or heavier maintenance. Um, that would be required down the road were included in that initial rate. They looked at it. They considered it and, uh, this is what we have. So it is increased by three percent per year since I've been here. And that has covered the cost. There's a little extra that the PUD has. And, uh, we're starting to get into more of the heavier maintenance projects. And so we have built up, um, by what the fee, the difference between what the fees are and what their operating expenses are. We have a little bit of money which covers. Now we're like the granting agency. They have to cover the cost, but they can't use their money to do those projects. So that money that's there allows them to do them without expending their dollars. So there is a little bit of cash there to accommodate that. But we end up reimbursing for that, so we can keep that, that small balance there. And allow them to, uh, construct those capital, large capital projects. Anyway, we're about getting close to twenty years out from the, when the plant was built. And so I'll let Jeff talk about everything.
I've talked about a few things, where, where we kinda sit today as far as cash and, and everything, um. So we had projected ending fund cash balance of about three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, somewhere in that vicinity. Uh, debt payment, good news, as we show, uh, we are done with the big debt. We still have the small debt. Uh, we have three payments left, but two of them have already been accounted for. So, because we're required to account for a full year in advance, we have to have the money set aside. Uh, that was part of the, uh, loan agreement. So we actually in twenty-two, we'll have the last, we set the last payment aside, which is the twenty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty-two. Which is four twenty-three, but according to our grant agreement, we have to do that. So, um, other things in twenty-two, we, there's a clarifier replacement. PUD pushed that off. Um, last year, they were, they, we're gonna do the other one. Last year they did one the year before. So that actually the cost is around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the clarifier. Um, county expenses to maintain for us to work with them back and forth is about seventy thousand dollars. And that's pretty, that's been pretty stable. What we, that's kinda common, what we've been asking for. PUD usually has some maintenance projects they give us. I don't have it now because they have, we don't get their budget yet. Um, and, uh, so that's kinda where we, that's, that's where we sit. As far as budget and all that, I'll talk a little bit about the projects and actually I, I, um. So there's, there's four project, we have a whole list of projects that are, that you'll see when we bring the plant forward. Um, and when Gordy was talking, there's, there's two things that affect the sewer treatment plant and the whole infrastructure. One is age and two is development. Typically, you see the age is affected in the treatment plant itself. And the infrastructure, the PVC pipes and all that is typically, is typically developed. So none of these projects would be our development driven. Our anticipation are, what I've talked to the consultant about is. We would look at the development as connection fees. Development should pay for development unless, you know, somebody else has a different say in that. But, um, inevitably, depending on where it goes, um, the PUD inevitably. It switched over to them. That's how they operate. Is development pays for development. Um, so to get to, to talk about some of this stuff, I'm gonna go through it pretty quick. These are the, it's a two-year. These are the two-year projects we're talking about. Uh, the lift station capacity investigation, actually that will be done. I've worked with, uh, Russ from PUD. That will be actually done out of their operations budget. So it won't be a capital outlay, so that's why we're not asking for it here. And what that is, is it's, our lift stations are not, when we've gone through this. You take, you take the, uh, data and it doesn't match with the design. Our pumping capacity is not what our design capacity is. Which, and I'll give you a, for instance, the Sunridge Avenue Lift Station has an existing pumping capacity of a hundred and one gallons per minute. Design capacity is five hundred and ten. So what they do, they go in, they'll look at the scana data, skated data. And to review that for accuracy at each lift station. Will also do pump drawdown tests and will do video inspections of the lines. Will also do pump drawdown tests and will do video inspections of the lines. Uh, we think it's a multitude of a few things. And if it's just video inspections of the lines, part of that will be what they call picking the lines out, they actually run a. Basically rotor router through the lines, through the force main lines. We're kinda thinking that that is probably, we're hoping that that is the cost, because if that is, then all the lift station stuff. That I'm not gonna break forward that, you know, I don't want to be the toll. I'm gonna go with the glass half full, if that's the case, then none of the lift station stuff. Upgrades will be needed until development. Which, cause the capacity and the pumps is, the lift stations is very good if we can get back to design capacity. So the other, the other three, the other, the other three are kinda tied, the, the one and, or two and three are really tied. Their server license, there, there are electronics that how the lifts, how the, uh, sewer treatment plant functions. Part of the sewer treatment plant though is, is we have ortho phosphate issues. And we've looked at, we figured, how can we fix those? You know, or at least get something where we can make here we have. Part of that is there is, we need to replace our server licensing and auto dial. And the telemetrics need to be replaced anyway, they're getting old, they're not reliable. And you can't get replacement parts for some of tho- those things. Again, I'm not saying it has to be done this year. It's just something to let everybody know. But part of that is you would upgrade those to help take care of the ortho phosphate. Because we don't, our current system doesn't allow for the plant to shut down, that would. And you'd shut the plant down for a couple hours every night or the low, low times, so you can actually grow bugs that eat ortho phosphate. It's, it's kind of an interesting thing, we'll get further into those weeds when we talk about the sewer plant.
We also had a couple sheets to replace. Um, you may have noticed that, so we, instead of three million for the U D's operating expense of three hundred thousand. So that's been corrected on the first sheet. And then the correct dollar amounts have been added to the, uh, Glanwood thing, twenty-nine thousand four sixty-two. To the page one oh five. Let's see. That's it.
Yeah, unless there's questions on.
Well, it's the same questions I kinda had last year, will we, we don't really have any control over. The cost the P U D charges to us. And I know looking between the twenty twenty, and I remember this last year, the. The, uh, labor and labor expenses, you know, there was a thirty-five percent increase in their labor cost. Is what they projected for the twenty-one budget. And they said, you know, that, yeah, it's, you know, increase in labor and labor duty union increases. Which that's a plus the addition of a superintendent position, uh, for the way, water wastewater department. Again, they, they basically were. They submit their budget, they said, they sent us a bill and we pay it, we don't have any control other than just saying. Wow, your labor costs went thirty-five percent that you're charging. Uh, to this project. It would just be, I mean, this is more, uh, I guess, a, a comment, it would be interesting if they're. Charged to their projects that they manage went up thirty-five percent for their labor costs.
We could audit them.
Cause that's, there seems like they're a rate payer, I mean, in a sense, we're the rate payer, I mean, cause we're covering. The difference, so I mean, they just said this, oh, or. Like, I don't mind paying for what we're doing, but I just wonder sometimes if we're, we're paying for more than what we're getting. To help offset some other. Cause I would have heard about it if labor costs went up thirty-five percent in Lyle for their wastewater plant or. Uh, Glenwood or other places and, you know, in Dalsport, the folks don't care because they're, they're costing book thirty-five percent. We paid.
Yes, exactly.
So. It will be interesting when we have the discussion after the last, you know, we, well, we're gonna have a. You know, discussion about what do we do with this plan? Cause we're not in the wastewater treatment business. Um, as far as who we turn it over to and.
When are we having that discussion?
Well, it'll be.
Ditch in.
Yeah.
Well, I gotta get the plan, I know they want, they wanna see the final plan. And they wanna see the recommendations for the rates. That's what I've been told, I think you probably know more than I.
Right. But I think we, you know, once the last payment is made, and I think that's gonna be a discussion for the board, do we want to just pay, you know, we. If we wanna move sooner as far as, uh, getting rid of this, then we'll pay off the lap, which isn't much money. Because the big payment was paid off this year and it's, and as we said, the last. At least, you know, I was told half the money for the final, where it's actually an escrow, so it's not really.
Fifty, you got twenty-nine thousand dollars, that's it.
Right, so I think.
Fifty thousand dollars.
Escrow, we have fifty-eight thousand.
That would be in addition to the twenty-nine.
Yes.
Right, so for twenty-nine thousand dollars, then we get, then we're not obligated anymore to still own the wastewater plant. And we can start.
And or obligated to fix these things if they come up before our monthly. If we drag it out a year and one of these things pop up, then we are obligated.
Plus, it's, we're obligated as long as it's ours.
Yeah.
So rather than later.
And so I think it's gonna be an interesting conversation with them about the, oh yeah, we'll take that terrible thing off your hands. If you pay all this in capital cost, so it's a shiny new, ready to go. And then our, um.
And then we'll change.
And then we'll change the rates to what you said they're gonna be and then. And then I will continue to chart, I mean, I know they're, they, they claim they don't, that the, each system has to pay its own way.
Yes.
Just what I've always heard as far as if they're, although again, labor cost thirty-five percent.
Oh, yeah.
Sounds a little sketchy, but.
Well, I look forward to this.
Yeah, I think this, this, of all the stuff you've done today is gonna be the thing that we probably spend most. Yeah, I'm trying to figure out what we're gonna do, cause that's been a. It's been a long-term capital cost and investment that the taxpayers of the county made and we're, we're done.
Yeah, yeah, yes, there's a big savings there.
There is, time to.
What, what is that plant currently running thirty to fifty percent capacity or what?
About close to fifty. Yeah, I. It is, the lift stations are not though, I mean, the lift stations are running at. High, some of them at high capacity, however, the design capacity and the actual operating capacity is not the same. And that is a, that is a, that's an issue that we gotta get figured out, right? Cause you're, you're talking a lot, you know, it, it, cause if it really, the lift station is going bad. I'm, I didn't bring in the list, list of projects, that gets expensive really fast. But I don't know why it would be. Um, so we gotta look at the, the, the easy things, the cost, less costly things first.
How many lift stations do we have?
Four.
You mentioned the Sun Ridge one where it's designed, it does, design capacity is five hundred gallons.
Yes.
It's running at a hundred and it's maxed out, is that?
It's not maxed out, it will be in the next couple of years.
So we're trying to determine, why is that?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. So other questions for these fine folks? Other than I'd see some. Tense discussions with P U D. Over, you know, big daddy's gotta, you know.
We'll take it, but you do everything.
You do everything, we won't take this terrible thing from you. Sounds like we're down to our last pennies, we're down to it, yeah.
Sounds like the city's trying to annex in.
Exactly, you fix all the roads and have it all done and, and then, I guess we'll take it. Yeah, the tax revenues. Yeah, yeah, I mean.
You know, we.
Yeah, well, especially at the long-term rate, that after the rate study will be, cause rates should be, if you're giving, if I have a. System that the capital cost is paid off, even with this maintenance stuff that you've got to do. I just can't understand that I, I can't charge, if I can charge a rate to, to pay, cause systems do that all the time. You, you've covered the entire cost. Including the capital cost, and why is this system? It's not even there, I mean, our rates aren't even covering, I mean, okay, I see. Twenty-one where end up with the net of seventeen hundred and forty dollars. What's that absorb, maybe that's why that, uh, labor cost had to be increased because it had, something had to suck up the, the profit. And so, that's just, I'm speculating, I don't want, if you're listening, I'm sorry, it's. You know, otherwise, if it was the old rate, it actually would have thrown off some cash. And we certainly couldn't have that, and so.
I don't know that, you know, just in the kind of kindness is at my level, but just conversing. It's kind of a win-win for both, they have a lot invested at that, I mean, not that, you know, we pay for everything, of course, but. You know, that's their lab. And other things.
What I would imagine labor wise too is that's the different, I don't know what they have for personnel. If it's, cause I assume this plant doesn't take one F T E, it's a partial, but then when you put. You know, if I'm running all this stuff, if I can add to the total, it's more efficient for me.
Exactly.
Than us, than not, so if there's a value to me, if I'm the one providing the service of having that. In the portfolio that it actually saves me money throughout the, all of the systems by having it.
Yeah.
And so there's a benefit to them to operating the system.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure that it's reflected in.
That's why that supervisor wasn't a whole position.
Right.
Yeah.
Portion of one.
A, a good portion, yeah. Seemed like a pretty big raise, but that's okay. Anyway.
Thank you, John.
Yes. The gravy train is over. Uh, anything anybody wants to add from the. Finance experts. Before we take a break, we're running a little bit ahead, thank you. Nope, doesn't look like it, okay, we're gonna, uh, then recess, uh, we'll be back, we're scheduled to be back at three fifteen. We could be back, we don't, I don't think we need a twenty-five minute break, do we? We'd rather get done early, can you see it, if. Can, can come over early, so let's shoot for three o'clock or so.
Jake, can you put the camera in the hot seat on the? The director, please?
I will start the video.
Camera hot lights.
Did we, did we press the record button?
Oh, yeah.
So I missed it, usually I can hear that thing.
Yeah.
Okay, so you don't have any new pieces for us? Perfect.
No idea.
You don't have any new pieces?
Yeah, no, no new pieces of paper for us. Alright. Alright, whenever you're ready, sir.
Do you have a particular place you wanted to start?
Whatever you wanna highlight, if there's something that's.
Yeah.
We'll go from there, we'll ask questions.
Received, uh, my packet with the memo?
Yes. Still putting my stuff together under public records.
I saw that that was.
Lots of, uh, lots of stuff.
So thank you for not bringing it in.
Yes.
You guys, and I, do you have supporting documents, questions, dictate?
There you go, yes, we, we should have everything for you, you just gotta get to that.
And like I said, I don't. Prepare to answer questions, I didn't have a whole other, um, presentation to give. I don't know the two new commissioners, how much background they have in the three funds. But the Fund one oh seven only includes the call taking. Functions, there's a combination of state nine-one-one grant funds and nine-one-one phone tax revenue. That can only be spent on certain things as allowed by the state through that program.
Just, uh, just refresh me, call taking is actually taking the call, not dispatching the.
Correct, answering a nine-one-one call.
Answering the phone, but not.
Get processing that information.
That's right, different dollars.
Yep, and then I said that, the grant and the nine-one-one phone exercise tax can only be used. For that function and, and even more so certain. Things associated with that function.
What, what phone exercise tax are we talking about?
The E nine-one phone exercise tax, it comes into the Fund one oh seven as a revenue stream, it's a tax on. Landlines, cell phones, um, and associated equipment purchases.
So the enhanced nine-one-one telephone tax on landline phones.
Yes.
That I have in my sheet right here, that says we don't currently claim, you're saying we are claiming.
Yes, we claim that, yes, we claim that. There's a say we don't claim.
No, we do, but there is additional.
There's other.
Of seventy cents.
Right.
We're still looking into that.
This isn't the two percent. Uh, the percentage tax.
Right.
This is on the landline phone bill.
Correct, yes, not the emergency communications tax that could be instituted at one tenth or two tenths. That has not been here.
Well, then why is this showing on our list from when we were discussing revenues? We're not claiming that.
I would understand that we were, they were getting ninety percent possible. We are, we are claiming that, um, that nine-one. Phone exercise tax currently and have been. Yes, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what you're referencing there.
This is the treasures list that he gave us, things we can do.
Yes, in our, um, our sustainable revenue.
I think we have capacity.
Oh, so we can add to.
We can add to, we're not at the maximum.
I've, since our last meeting, the, the meeting of, uh, this finance and, uh, treasurer. Discuss those, sustainable revenue options, um, I. I no longer believe that to be true, I believe that we are along with every other county, we have been collecting the maximum amount. I don't believe there's any room left there, but that is still to be investigated and determined.
Alright, good for you.
It's been quite some time. Never updated.
Look at that. Yeah.
So we do receive. Nine-one-one on, um, wireless calls.
Yes. Mm-hmm, yes.
Hundred and eighty-seven thousand. Right, that's what that.
Yes, they're, they break it down in several different categories. The wireline has been decreasing as people shed their use of, um, wireline, home telephones. And the wireless. Portion of that tax has been increasing.
Yeah, I think, cause I, on my wireless still, there, there's a tax on it.
Correct.
So, so if we're, if we're in Tony, last year on the wireline thirty-five and then this year we're only nineteen-nine. And we're saying this current year was forty-eight, next year's thirty-four. Where are you getting that thirty-four, what kind of depreciation or subtraction are you using, as we know. We, more and more are going V O I P and, and everything else.
So though, um, I'm not sure exactly what your rest.
This is three one three six three.
Just in the actual sheet.
Page thirty-three, our number should be the same, so it's your revenue.
So those. The amounts that we estimate are based on the previous year for the, the phone tax. Uh, based on the previous years and the increase or decrease that we see, and we estimate next year's either increase or decrease.
I just try and understand.
Where you got that number.
In your wireline right there, is this wire. In your wireline right there, is this wireline phone tax that I'm looking at right here? This is a potential of a hundred and sixty grand. Then you were only getting forty, thirty-five last year. Thirty-four next year proposed, that's the same tax we're talking about.
We can all check into that more for you.
I'm just trying.
I'm showing a hundred and sixty available, so.
On the, on the sheet you're referencing earlier.
They got some treasure that says we're not.
I will not dispute the treasure, but that is not the information that I have.
Maybe before you go, you can take a snapshot of this, and, or you know what I'm talking about when you talk to him.
Since our last meeting, for that sustainable revenue project, the treasurer and I have not been able to make the connection, follow up.
So continue, continue.
So, as we've already discussed, the grant and the phone tax did not fully fund the nine-one-one call-taking function. Expenses. With the continued increases in insurance, wages, benefits. System, equipment, maintenance, and those. Obligations are then being added to Fund One Thirty-Five. But Fund One Oh Seven is, is just comprised of the expenses that are allowable under the grant. And the nine-one-one phone tax. Everything else goes into Fund One Thirty-Five. And that is both what's allowed by the state program, and then what is. What they provide in the grant or the phone tax. Has to be put under one thirty-five. Which is entirely can be funded.
So in terms of our revenue for next year and grants and all that for emergency management. And your new, your new hire, do you have any new grants you're expecting that didn't get put on here?
In the One Twenty-Seven Fund, the Emergency Management Fund, referencing out, yes, those grants turnover. So the one grant, the EMPG grant turns over annually, then there are state homeland security grants. That come available every year, and they run typically a three-year cycle. Again, you know, there's projects that we get done earlier than finished, but we get a new grant offering every year. So it's a continual cycle, one of new grants, and at any time in the Emergency Management Fund. One Twenty-Seven, we have four or five grants active at any one time throughout the year typically. And one of those is the Emergency Managed Program Grant, which is a base grant from the state, passed down through the state from FEMA. That is ranged anywhere from. Oh, eighteen thousand dollars a year to twenty-eight thousand dollars a year, depending on. What the state chooses to do with that funding, the base amount, what we have received for years is eighteen thousand dollars. And that's based on the state's fiscal year, July.
So like with the military. Prior year was nineteen thousand, current year is nine thousand. Next, current year amended is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, we just not built for that, or did not come through, what's going on in that? Did he push like a panic button that said, get it? They're asking me questions.
That amount fluctuates. Current year end, or current year amended, so on, those, those dollar amounts, like you said, the. One Twenty-Seven Fund is only comprised of twenty-one thousand dollars in local money. That's generated through the, you know, local agreement between the county and all three cities. In which the county pays a portion and all three cities pay a portion.
Yep, I guess you could call it a portion.
So that's, that's the local money in there, everything else is grant reimbursements. And that, those amounts fluctuate depending on the ground amounts that were offered, as well as the projects. That we have applied for and then granted, and what we can get done, what we reasonably believe we can get done in that year. Depending on whether it's, you know, like an equipment purchase, that's could be dead simple, so you can, you can spend. A considerable amount of more money in one year, if you're making equipment purchases versus. If you're doing planning, training, exercises, and those sorts of things, which is all personnel, time-driven, and so on. So those would be the differences in.
So, so that's what I'm, I'm trying to understand, this is that we've got a, a grant that it seems like it was a hundred and forty thousand dollar grant from Department of Homeland Security. We spent twenty thousand dollars last year, we've spent nine thousand dollars so year, so far. But yet the grants for a hundred and forty thousand.
Those were totals of all five grants, is what that, that hundred and forty thousand dollars would represent. And because of last year's COVID response, and the O C being activated, there was a, a halt put through all of that activity. Everything was pushed off, the normal activities of training exercises, you know, any of those grant projects. Were just halted so that we did respond to the COVID event. And staffing changes, the continued COVID response this year and staffing changes that we've had have also stalled. Projects, progress on the project.
And so we applied to keep those.
They're.
Yes, rolling over, and we're in a good position, so we've got access to that hundred.
Yes, twenty-two thousand dollars next year. Yep, we're actually in the process right now, one of those grant performance periods ends. This month, we're in the process of completing two projects related to that. In that timeline to make sure we don't lose those grant funds, and those are all except for the EMPG grant, which is the, in the twenty. Twenty thousand dollar range, they'll say. All the other ones are multi-year grants, and, and we have the option to run them out in the performance period, usually up to three years. So we've amended those continually, last year and this year, to make sure that we're not going to.
And, and can you use Frank's time for these grants too? Are you billing his time to these as well?
Yes, yeah, we're getting reimbursed for almost the entirety of his wages and benefits.
Off of that.
Off of multiples of those grants, correct?
With the use of fun, local budget, and I'd like to apologize for being late, I'm sorry, I'm the behind-the-scenes gathering.
You actually were early, so it was not, we moved things up.
I left your message, they called us in.
But I want you to know that, you know, you only see the full amount, but Jacob, this is what I do to. I have a spreadsheet that goes from year to year on all these grants, and that's how we budget for those.
We track them in detail, for our own purposes as well as for the grant accounting and justifications. Any other questions?
Okay, so you think you're gonna be able to spend most of that hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars in the next couple of months?
No. Our main ranges, too, I guess, I amend those grants, or they were not. The performance period doesn't expire by the end of the year.
Okay, so I was trying to understand when the hundred and thirty-eight then went down to a hundred and twenty-two for next year, and you've got some that you're rolling over. Is that just based?
That is an estimate of.
Has, is ending, so.
The what?
A full grant from this year that we budgeted for is, and has ended September thirtieth.
Okay.
And that was. Twenty-six, nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars, or twenty-seven, nine-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars. Yes.
Okay, I was talking more about the Homeland Security Military Department Grant, the one that shows, the one above it that shows. We, we've only used nine thousand dollars out of a hundred and forty-five.
So there's, there's another one that's ending October thirty-first, you should see paperwork coming in for that. And that grant ended July, but we extended it to complete the projects. We had the two emergency management coordinators come on board, right when we were finishing that, we purchased. Twenty-something, I don't know the number of radios for the fire district down in Glenwood. About thirty-eight thousand.
The bottom line is that, where we will be, the difference between this year and next year is that we will have spent some of that money that we. But there'll be other projects that we carry over, and then a new grant that we just received, the twenty-one SHSP. And what we, how we budget for our expenses next year is based on what those projects are. What we realistically can get done with our staffing and other commitments. In next year, and then what will play on out of any one of those or all of those grants, like you said, there's, there's four or five in play all at the same time. Into the next year, twenty-twenty-three or twenty-twenty-four, so when you have. Four to five grants, three to four of which are running on three-year timeframes, they all overlap at the same time, so. Yeah, these are estimates of what we believe that we'll be able to get done and get reimbursed for. Yeah, because all of those, that, you know, the hundred and forty thousand dollar amount is, is the total amount that we. Believe that we could get reimbursed for, therefore we need the budget authorization to do it. And, yeah, and if we don't do those projects, we don't get reimbursed, then there's nothing, change its hands, there's no effect to the actual. Cash in that account or the fund balance or.
And also the expenditure side.
Yeah, nothing, nothing comes or goes if we can't get it done. We just need to give ourselves the flexibility to do as much as we reasonably can get done in a year. Otherwise, we'd have to come back for a supplemental budget request, and that's not, even though it would be for reimbursement. It adds more time and energy and work to the staff if we did that.
We don't know anything like what that's about.
Yes.
Okay, that was my question, that was the big thing that popped out in front of.
No, I heard a question.
It's an emergency management program, yeah.
I'd like to say I was really listening to that, but I was. I have mine ready, so, but I, I want to do it at, you know, correct time. Because it's yours as I was confusing because of the different. Communicate, yeah, the, you know. And so that, I know you're getting questions across the whole spectrum, and that's. I didn't know if you wanted to continue that, or you, I will, my, my stuff's all in the, in one thirty-five, in the education. Let's, let's go to. So maybe a little background to communicate, so Fund One Thirty-Five, what are the funding revenue sources for One Thirty-Five?
Revenue sources for One Thirty-Five, well.
Excise tax. And the inter-locals with the cities.
Yes.
For dispatch service and the P U D, I guess, if we call that five thousand.
And EMS district.
With the microwave.
Yeah, right. And the landfill, as for, or in this, I mean, I'm saying the landfill, but it's, I mean, county dollars, solid waste.
And it used the solid waste that was, that was done, I think this year for, no, twenty-twenty, it was moved for the twenty-twenty budget. It used to be a combination of solid waste dollars and the amount of two hundred thousand was flat, and then. Roughly a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars of other general funds, if you remember back that time in twenty-nineteen, I believe it was, for the twenty-twenty budget. It was, why are we?
Why are we transferring the general fund then into one thirty-five, why don't we just do a direct?
Now we're taking that, that total amount out of solid waste, goes directly into one thirty-five. And then the real estate excise tax is another revenue stream, right?
So in the, I, the, so I'm on the revenue page, so it's page. One of the one thirty-five. So we have. Real estate excise tax, prior year four forty-seven K roughly, which we know those, those, you had advised us about the. Because there's so much.
Hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars more last year was received than we anticipated.
Right, and so we have budgeted, what you're proposing is to raise the excise tax to four hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Yes, that's what we believe would be a reasonable.
A reasonable number, so it's a hundred thousand dollar increase as far as getting revenue from real estate excise.
And that's based not only on the twenty-twenty numbers that are actual, but also the actuals year-to-date.
Year-to-date, because I see at the time the report was, you were already at three fifty-six. I don't think there'll be any problem with you hitting the four twenty-five.
Correct, however, we're not. Bold enough to believe that that's gonna.
We're gonna, at some point. I just want us to recognize that we're, we gotta, we're trying to think about sustainable long-term funding.
I, I put that in my memo specifically.
How long do you think people are gonna wanna move here?
Well, that's true, it may, I mean, when does, when does a trend turn into sustainable as far as? I mean, at some point, yeah, as far as if people keep moving here.
So from September or August of twenty-twenty into December twenty-twenty was. You know, fifty to sixty thousand dollars a month.
Right.
Of the rate, you know, back in February twenty-twenty was, you know, down to ten thousand. But that was just an oddity, that February, but it's typically been an average of twenty-four. Is what we've budgeted over year after year, but seeing this trend, we've kind of like, well, we have to budget for it.
Right.
But, yeah.
So I just want to make sure I understand, though, in here, and when I drop down a solid waste fees. In revenue, so prior year, actual five hundred and seventy-six thousand, thousand, five hundred and seventy-six thousand. Were amended to the same, that was prior year, so the same for this year. And then we're proposing three hundred and seventeen thousand, so that is a two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar reduction in landfill. Resources, explain that, that's a great, I love it.
We did that, we proposed that, and. To, to, to put, give relief to the landfill dollars and, i.e. the general fund. Because of the increase in rate from last year, that total amount, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Plus the increase that we're anticipating for this year. And next year, that can be used. Alright, so we've increased the estimates for next year based on last year and this year's actuals, year-to-date. And then the use of last year's actuals.
Right.
Of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, and then we're requesting that much less out of the solid waste.
Right, so you're taking last year and what you expect this year, and you're pulling out a solid. The thing is, and that's, that's great.
Not this year, what we expect this year, but, so we budgeted appropriately for what we expect to get next year in actual revenue from the rate. And then what we know we got from.
Right, so it's accumulated.
This year.
So if the market turns and the house sales stop, then you will be coming back for supplemental to make up the difference with the solid waste, is what you're saying.
In, in the amount of increase that we budgeted for next year's. Because in twenty-twenty, we didn't, we didn't increase it that much, because we figured. For twenty-twenty-one's budget, we didn't increase the red risk, revenue estimates that much, because I didn't trust it. I thought it would just be a fleeting thing, and it would be over and done, when we submitted twenty-twenty-one's budget in August, I was not gonna count on those numbers. Now we have enough historical knowledge to know what we actually received, what we believe will be realistic for this year and next year. And that's what we've done.
If I go back here.
But if it crashes, like you said, if it goes to zero, then that's, that's a whole new deal, but. That would be another anomaly in the.
Right. So I'm assuming, what, if I go find that, our year, the fund balance of one thirty-five has gone up. As far as it has accumulated. Because we transferred what we budgeted to transfer in landfill dollars, but then that was in excess of expenses. And so, because you got all this other money came in from real estate, so fund balance has gone up, and so you're.
And that transfer from landfill. Solid waste dollars needs to happen in the beginning of year. Solid waste dollars needs to happen in the beginning of year to, to cover those expenses because the rate comes in monthly.
Okay, the only thing I, the only reason I, it's like, I understood all that, I just want us to know. That this is not, it may not be a permanent, it's not a permanent solution in that, oh, great. We got an extra two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of landfill money that we don't have to put there that we have been.
Not something we can count, count on.
We can count on.
Annual basis going forward.
Jen and the treasurer.
Fund balance for prior year, one thirty-five was one ninety-five, hundred ninety-five thousand for beginning of current year is four hundred and five.
Right, so there, that's, yeah.
And we've been encouraged in past years, since I've been here, to, you know, spend that fund balance down to be responsible. To that tax dollars, because when I first got here in twenty fifteen. I think the fund balance in One Thirty-Five was again up in the five hundred thousand dollar range, so we'll use that.
Rather, the money was either sitting in the general fund. Or it was sitting in cumulative reserve that really is excess, not sitting in individual like of fund. Cause we can't spend it. Once it leaves, we can't spend it on other stuff.
And as that re-revenue is, is directed to this fund by resolution, then that's also a consideration.
Right, Mr. Treasurer.
Um, the only, the, the one thing, the caveat too, with the read money of the four twenty-five is then. Fund three oh three needs to have the same exact budget amount, whatever that number is in their budget. Needs to be, cause they split that money.
Right, so in the past years.
Sometimes they've not been the same. So I, I, I think nine fifty is not a bad number, I, 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 I mean, I think it's gonna be somewhere eight to nine. I mean, I, it's a pick your poison kind of a thing, I mean, whoever has the best crystal ball, I don't think they're far off. But we need to make sure that when we listen to the three oh three presentation, that that has the same four twenty-five, or if we think there should be four hundred, then that should be.
Right, they need to be the same number. So that's if we put a new grant on the fair.
And I'm not saying your number's wrong, I'm just saying an overall budgeting thing.
The revenues that come in have to be split fifty, fifty, and if your fifty is four twenty-five.
And when I first got here, that split was not happening accurately, so we had to correct that in twenty sixteen, I believe.
We trued everything up and.
Made those corrections, yeah.
So, so where, what I'm getting at right now for this fund, unless there's some general dollars coming from somewhere that I can't see is. You're about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, you know, off that we've gotta come up with either general fund or. Or solid waste revenues, that's, that's about where we're at from, from how much you bring in through all your different means and how much we have to slip over there. Cause you're, you know, your expenditures and your, everything is balanced, I'm just trying to.
Yes, so that, what is proposed for next year's. Next year's proposed column under solid waste fees is the three hundred and seventeen eight sixty.
The fund is not self-supporting without other.
And when the rate starts to, you know, I hate to say go back to normal, but when it starts to stabilize, level out again. Then that number will increase, so as we've talked about it, sustainable revenue project proposals. Then those are the numbers we're gonna be looking at. Added to that would be what's on the C I P, which we did not include anything that we submitted. To get to this number because of the more direction to cut three percent. We did not include anything that's on our C I P. In phase one that we submitted, we've got. A, the security camera for the D E M facility that needs to be upgraded. At public or at I T's insistence. We made some replacements because the gate camera was, was not functioning, or the other interior cameras. In the parking lot wasn't functioning at all, so we made those changes, I believe, early this year. Replace those two cameras, the whole system is at the point that it needs to be replaced or upgraded in such a way. And that was in my C I P submission. And also was in the C I P for additional monitors to be added to the dispatch consoles. For their ability to. View, track and, and efficiently respond to calls and dispatching of all the data and mapping that they have to do. That was also submitted in the ideas for our use of federal funding. Request from the board, but none of those are included in our proposed budget. As you say, go ahead, I'm gonna put.
Those are capital projects, they should be budgeted for attract.
Well, that's sort of what we, we, you know, we, I put together that forty-year projection, right? And there's a lot of equipment that's gonna run out of life, you know, at some point, so. The buildup of rate in our mind is not, oh yeah, let's go spend money, it's pretty much like, you know, let's replace the equipment that's gonna die. So that's, and this hundred and fifty-seven is, is kind of, is close to the three percent that we could get because. Maintenance contracts and at least everything has got a three percent increase or a C P I or something. As well as insurance and you, you know the drill.
And a new ceiling, yes. My human resources director points. Yeah, hey, if I gotta be on the spotlight. Yes, a new ceiling in dispatch, the acoustic. Considerations for the communications room that, that weren't properly designed and built in the beginning, we're still have. You know, a piece of that to do, because whenever it rains, even when the wind blows strong, you can hear the roof rattle. And when it rains or hails in there, it's hard to communicate, and that is the primary function of that room is to communicate. With nine-one callers and responders. Yeah, it's, it's a problem, and that's a piece that still has yet to be fixed, that's also in the C I P, but that was submitted to public works and they should have been bringing that forward. For whatever they estimated that to.
They're up in a couple thirsty. Yeah, there's, we'll split into two.
Yeah, that's the. Got it.
Can I go last too, which is not a. That's always the, well, what's left? Any other questions for any of the funds? Or you can go back to if you want.
I'm here to answer your question first, foremost, I can give you background because, you know, two of you are new at this, but I, I don't want to. Rattle on and waste all our time. Tell me what you wanna know. What I can.
So, so a question as far as back to. Are there, is there, without looking through here, is there call-taking expense, you know, eligible call-taking activity? That is taking place in excess of the revenues that come in from the call-taking tax? And the, the state grant that the county uses in their landfill that backfills that number?
Anything that is, that is in excess of what the grant or the phone tax covers. Even if it's eligible, is expensed through the One Thirty-Five.
Okay.
Communications, correct, as well as all of the public safety radio system expenses are in the One Thirty-Five.
Well, I'm trying to see is, do we have, are we using county dollars to pay one oh seven expen-? You know, one oh seven has dollars that come into it from those two that are debt, you know, restricted funds that can only be used on that.
And that's why we keep it in that one fund, we don't mix any other revenue.
But if there was more restricted funds that came into one oh seven, could we actually expend them in one oh seven? Or are they perfectly balanced right now? I don't think so.
Well, they, they are on paper.
On paper.
Now, there are things that are eligible under the state program that there's not enough.
Right, there's not enough money coming in, so we just.
And the way.
Move it over to one thirty-five.
The way the state manages the grant award every year is they go back. Help me if I get this wrong, right, to the, cause there, you know, on the state fiscal year, July to June, in a biennium. So they go back, I believe, two years, look at what the nine-one tax revenue was. And then they adjust the amount of the grant that they give us, the up and down to balance. So if we make more money in nine-one excise phone tax, then they reduce the grant by that same amount.
To keep it.
On a two-year lag.
To keep it level?
I have no idea, that's just why they.
Because our expenses are going up, so.
They will reduce the amount of the grant if we, if we get more money from the phone tax, correct? That has been.
Lose, you're just gaining for a year or so, then you're out. It would be a temporary funding source. Within a long term.
Keep in mind, I think we're confusing what can be increased and what can't be. I'll get back to you on that, yeah.
There's a lot of, you know, wax to read and understand about what's eligible and what's not, and then Julie had that pretty much. Julie and then Jamie before her. You know, and they'll give me the invoices to pay and, you know, and I'm always, it's this grant reimbursable, so I'm making sure that I'm not, you know. Putting those in the wrong fund or something, but. Now Phil is asking the right questions, will, how do we get to these reimbursables? So the, the coordinator just sent him a link to all these whacks for him to learn. So we'll be moving on. Finding out more about this as we.
I'm just trying, as we look at sustainable revenues into these funds. Some options that we have have strength, they're dedicated resources, and I wanna make sure to balance, if it doesn't do me any good. Then I'm not gonna waste my time, if I raise more money to put it and they just take that same amount away from me, then there's no benefit. Yes, yes ma'am.
But could the benefit be in the administration portion of managing that grant?
Oh, I see, you're talking like increased productivity because you're gonna have to deal with that grant.
Where there's a lot of admin for very little.
You would never be, you would never be able to make up that, that nine-one grant is in four hundred.
But maybe in emergency management, where there are these little, you know, here's, here's fourth, yeah, here's five thousand dollars and it takes you.
Yeah, I, I, I had a couple of those when I first got here.
And it's like, get rid of.
Six years ago and I, yeah, I closed them out and never, there's D O T grants out there for eight thousand bucks.
Twenty-two thousand dollars worth of the admin to administer.
It's not so much the times, frustration, right?
And what your life worth.
But, but, one of those. Because they're looking at, you know, one oh, one oh seven, if we added, put a employee, another employee in one oh seven. And then we can look at the state and we say, you know, our excise tax went up, but our cost of also went up, so don't, don't rob, rob me here. Cause I still have needs.
You can only have. So as many.
They tell you how many employees.
Because our, because of how many stations you have, you can only be reimbursed by how many stations is it?
All part of the program rules, and because we are, it, they do a calculation by how many consoles, how many stations you have for. Nine-one call-takers, but also because our, our comms officers are, do both, they take nine-one calls and they dispatch simultaneously. They allow us, as long as the grant and the phone tax was important, to pay for half of our communications officers. Out of that, those two funding streams. So they, they've just arbitrarily or somehow, I won't disparage them, but they've said, okay. Half of your call-taker's time, we, we believe is answering the phone call and the other half is dispatching, so we'll pay you for half. Of your wages and benefits, and so that equals half the number of our comms officers are in. The one oh seven and half are in the one thirty-five, they also pay. The lion's share of the nine-one coordinator, which is our chief of ops slash nine-one coordinator, but that, all they care about is the nine-one coordinator. Title, their wages and benefits, as well as the phone expense, right? Cell phone, email, stuff like that.
You're saying you pay for half and you have four, if you have six.
No, up until, up until the point that that grant, they only give you so much grant dollars. So if we were another center that had dedicated call-takers, then, you know, they'd pay for as many of those as. They give you grant dollars or that you collect phone tax for. Right, and then all the rest of them have to be paid some other way, because our, our folks, our comms officers do both, we just decided half.
I'm actually shocked.
So, it's the same though with the generator maintenance for our building. Interruptible power supply, they'll pay half of those costs because half of it goes to support the nine-one call-taking function.
Okay, but how do you have a half a generator? Say we were not an integrated system and we had only call-takers. They would pay for all of it.
Up into the cap, is the amount of the grant they give.
But we're using the, the full amount of.
We're, yep, and at the end of every grant cycle, we do our darnest work with the state nine-one coordinator that, that manages the grant on the state side. To, to make sure that we spend every dollar, they give us allowances sometimes if we haven't been able to spend it in other areas because. We don't have our own in-house I T, which is a line item, and the grant has all the lines that we deal with, just like in, in our budget. And they have set amounts in that grant that, that's for I T, for M S A, for G I S, all these things. And most years, we can't spend it, all of the money in each one of those grants, so then they let us use it in other ways. And we worked very hard at the end of that grant cycle, and as I mentioned to you in my last board update, we got to a zero. We, we spent it all, we've done that every year except for once since I've been here.
I'm surprised they give you grants if you have other options on the table. And they don't make you say, use everything you have there and then they'll, but.
This may, I mean, the time or the place, or Jeff may have covered it in department update, I just missed it, but I think last year he talked about. And, and I truly don't know the answer, are we setting money aside for the future upgrade of the radio system, which I think Jeff has estimated at a million and a half? Two million, but, maybe, but.
Well, that, that's for a year, over the next forty years, there's different years that come with different replacement costs.
Not all at once.
No, there, there is those, there's like a, I can't remember the year off the top of my head, there's. I think in twenty twenty-three is a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment in the upgrading. Or replacing the page channel in its entirety, because that equipment goes out of lifespan. I've got all this in my stack, but I'm. There's another one.
The question is.
We've talked about doing that as far as having a communication, you know, like a V R and R for.
Radio.
For a radio system. Well, we, in a sense, we have in that we have, as we mentioned earlier, our resolution expires next year. We have been setting three hundred thousand dollars aside a year, and that for ten years, we committed to that. To use to build out the last two radio, that's why the money is there for that. You know, my thought was, you know, we would just compete that that's really is the same thing. If we, if we just keep doing what we're doing, cause it, we had raised enough money to pay for everything as of next year. That's why we're able, you know, we're hopefully are gonna build. Save this pass this year and the money's already saved up for it.
It would be nice to be able to get that money back and put it on a levy.
Yeah, possibly, that might be an option, that'd be something for the board to, because, you know, if we did it, if we funded that a different way. Then it would free up that three hundred thousand that we could put somewhere else, so, but that's. The answer is no, not specifically, but there is a way to, but.
Question, because I had needed to confirm what I was thinking anyway.
And we've discussed that in prior years, a couple of times, is, is do we wanna set up a. Radio system. Right, savings fund, basically.
Which I would say, you know, when we asked, you know, and you did great work as far as giving us those projections out for years and what. And when you look at the, that's why I was less concerned, unless we were either gonna look at a different funding source, for me, I was just like, well. This was already radio money that we were setting aside, and that, what we're already set aside was more than enough to fund. And that, what we're already set aside was more than enough to fund that if we just kept doing it. If we just kept putting that aside. You know, they would be, cause it's not every year, it's, we gotta save up, we got a big thing out here, you know, five years out. Then we're good for a while, maybe a few little things and then, then we would just let that fund accumulate like a VRNR for the thing. But the board can either do it that, again, it would be re, just keep doing what we're doing and just set it aside for that. Extend that resolution, cause now it, it expires next year, cause we paid for the two new radio things, we saved up.
Oh, we saved a significant amount of money not building the click at that site.
Yeah.
Up on Redtail.
Right.
Just upgrading.
And I think actually when we look, cause that was, we had anticipated, we needed three million dollars. And between the two, even with inflation, I don't think we're gonna spend three million dollars. So there's actually a, a balance in that fund.
And I just wanna confirm that Commissioner Christopher Anderson, you, you have told me before, I believe that you have access to that forty year projection spreadsheet. And that, I said, and, and that is when we got into the research for that. Maintenance and operation of the radio system. It was obvious that we needed to include the nine one one dispatch systems, because that's all technology driven as well, has the same kinda lifespan. So that number includes both radio system and the nine one one call taking and radio dispatching functions. And like I said, just a heads up that twenty twenty three is, is one of those big ticket years, relatively speaking. And the first one at four hundred and some thousand, just for the radio system replacement cost. And the, and nine one one dispatch replacement systems or system replacement.
Well, and my, my advocacy for doing it that way is that we are not, I mean, we could take the old way, which we were pushing, we were able to do it. Is that you just wait till you need to do something and then you just pay for it then. And that's how we ended up with, you know, that we, you know, we spent about ten million dollars plus to just do it. Well, we, we're not gonna have, I, I don't wanna leave that, that liability out there for a future board that, oh, I need, I need ten million dollars now to upgrade and fix everything, because we won't be able to do it. And so the idea is, put a little aside and just pay, just build it as you go and fix things. And that's the, that's the.
Yeah. At this current time with the rate that things are coming upon us, because we've been using this radio system since both parts of it, cause it was built in stages. Um, we went multicast first in twenty twelve. And so I think four of the current eleven sites went online in, in twenty twelve. And then we went live with the rest of the sites in September of twenty fourteen. But that, you know, that system's been in play long enough now that those computers, that's what they are, they're not solid state radios anymore. Are coming to the end of, of lifespan, not just service. There, yeah, and that's what we base all these numbers on with the radio engineer. Is when do we expect it, if we do not replace them, that they will actually start to fail. And since then, I've been able to acquire several spares of different things. As I reported to you, the last couple of board updates as well, from one from Hunter County and prior to that from Kedaz County. So that if we do have one radio in a particular channel fail, that we can replace that with one of our spares. And keep that working, because right now each one of the radio channels takes the same identical radio at every site. You can't, you can't just take a new style model radio.
You have to replace all.
You would have to do it what they call a fork lift replacement, replace them with the latest version of those radios at all. Eleven and soon to be twelve sites.
That was a piece I missed, the, the trainer thousand, the first thing's paid off and you just keep. Yeah, we can keep doing it. And I would get the thing coming up in twenty twenty three and that, that'll be a decision for the board. Like I said, we, we saved, you know, as of, you know, next year, at the end of the resolution, about three million. There, we have not expended or won't have expended three million out of that towards, towards the click attacks. Because it was way cheaper than building the other one. And say this is, unless it comes, I think we only, I think it was.
But didn't some of the other ones come in higher than?
No, no, that started from that point forward, we just need all, oh, believe me, everything, we just bled money until it went live.
Not to brag, but Public Works and myself are not gonna let the failures of the past happen again. We know, we, we watched them and we've learned from them.
Well, I think click a tad is an example, cause that's the thing that we built after, so that's our first post. And that was nothing, yeah. And.
Post phase one radio.
Yeah, post phase one radio and it came in very reasonably and like it should have. And I will have the same expectation for Sada, so there's gonna be.
And it's built correctly.
And built correctly, and so that when we total that all up, there's gonna be fund balance in that reserve fund that we've said that we should be, that should be good place to start. So if we have in twenty twenty three where we have that two hundred and fifty thousand, you know, we can pull it out and out as we're still, hopefully, if we're still saving, or if the board chooses a different direction, I'm always gonna advocate. We need to be putting money aside for those so that we don't. Just, yeah, just like everything else, because it's, it would be the same thing as like if we did put money aside for new vehicles and we just bought them, drove them, drove them, drove them until they crashed. And then it's like, I need, now I need six new pickups and all that, then there's, where do I get the money for that?
I'm, I'm, yeah, I wanted to be there or there.
And, and because of budget constraints, in the past three years, even though the, the radio engineers recommended replacement of the forty eight old DC power plants, of those batteries, there's four at most sites, eight at some sites. They range from four thousand to eight thousand dollars to replace them per site. And we had a replacement cycle before they actually failed, because that's something we can't allow in this system, is things to actually fail. And then you have downtime or outage for public safety radio. I came up with another strategy so that we can replace those batteries on an as needed basis instead of replacing them. So they're, they're monitored and tested multiple times a year by the technicians, two different contractors. So that if, if they start to get weak, then we replace them, instead of just replacing them under the manufacturer's recommendation and spending that money po- potentially without. And I just, I don't remember, we talked a lot about the radio system. Radio site locations. I take it back, I didn't even give you some more favors, sorry.
Given us this to us like four times.
Say this passes now on there.
They say usually just look left, it was covered and I moved that one so it wasn't covered.
Okay, well, that, that shows you that.
Three cents on paper.
Eleven, soon to be twelve sites in our system currently. Eight of those sites are owned and operated by the county, one of those is the prime site, the emergency management facility is mainly. Facilities maintenance is done by Public Works, but the other seven sites that are owned by the county, all that facilities maintenance is done by my department, myself, using contractors. We have one shared site, it's a cooperative between the county, click that beauty and wave broadband now. It's originally Sonnet, and Sonnet manages that site. Wave broadband, that is the diamond gap site. Yeah, that serves the Glenwood Valley. And so when wave broadband took it over from Sonnet, I convinced them to take over the management as it stipulates in the agreement. Before that, Sonnet was not, so we were paying for all that. Site facilities management and maintenance. And then we have two sites that we self lease from other, one from Benton County and one from a cooperative that includes mid-comb fire and rescue, tribal fisheries, law enforcement and Oregon forestry. And we just lease from them.
What's the little R on the map?
R on the map. I have no idea, that would be a question for a accumulation. It's not part of, of the radio system.
Trademark.
Anything else I can give you to help make decisions? Well, my checkbook.
Anything else? Thank you.
Really, that's all?
That's all.
See, that's why I love Randy, she's, she's an accountant, she's in the details, she likes the details, but.
We're just trying to provide her a stress-free workplace.
I only wanna give you what you need. Make the decision, yeah.
I can tell there's a smile underneath that mask over there.
I, I wanna make sure we get what we are asking for to make things smooth, you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, it is a little different, usually everybody comes in with a pitch.
Yeah.
And this is comes in with, what questions do you have?
One more time, and I will get with the treasurer to talk about this.
Just double check.
I know what it is, I, I don't, I, we disagree on the fact that it can be increased.
Okay, that's perfect.
I think you're, I think, I think. I think, I think there's confusion over that versus the emergency communications.
I couldn't remember.
According to the state nine one one coordinator. Every county in the state is maxed out on the nine one one phone tax. We all collect the maximum.
Last Tuesday at the end of the day, but there was some discussion about it, did three videos that are online.
So next Thursday, we start off.
I, I could be if the, if the.
What I think about. Can I live with the links? When it was initially was that we were just gonna, we were gonna upload those and have them on our site.
I don't know if we can download.
Cause that's, yes, sir.
The fair is scheduled for next Thursday at one thirty. We start off with the auditor, but the county fair was rescheduled. And we were open in the afternoon, except for this record.
Brendan's bringing in a, a band and.
Oh, yeah.
Cookies.
Cookies.
Of cookies.
Whatever it takes.
It's her birthday? So we get a cake.
We should.
I'll defer to my sleepmates on that as far as whatever you guys. I mean, we generally don't post. They're not our videos.
They're easily accessed by anybody that wants them. I would disagree, because if the next person has videos that are different from our video. From a different side of the room, then they're gonna want their links posted. They are readily available.
Yeah, I mean, I'm uncomfortable with.
Or anybody there, I've emailed them to our clerk, so if anybody has the Freedom of Information Act request, we can send them that way.
I know we talked about it.
Yeah, that's my stance.
I, I think it's a Pandora's box. That's, that's a good point, cause there is multiple points of view. They were, and in fact, I have to make sure the person had a good, that was a good angle. I have a motion and a second, all the papers say aye. Aye, motion passes, we are adjourned. Bye, folks.